Welcome to the fifth public hearing for the inquiry into road tolling regimes. Before I commence, I'd like to acknowledge the Gadigal people, who are the traditional custodians of the land on which Parliament sits. And also like to pay respects to the elders, past, present and emerging of the Eora Nation, and extend that respect to other Aboriginals present or who may be watching this inquiry today. Today's hearing is being conducted virtually. This enables the work of the committee to continue during the COVID-19 pandemic without compromising the health and safety of members, witnesses and staff. If participants lose their internet connection and are disconnected from the virtual hearing, they are asked to rejoin the hearing by using the same link as provided by the committee secretariat. Today, we will be hearing from New South Wales Treasury, Transport for New South Wales and representatives from Transurban. Before we commence, I'd like to make some brief comments about the procedures for today's hearing. While parliamentary privilege applies to witnesses giving evidence today, it does not apply to what witnesses say outside of their evidence at the virtual hearing. I therefore urge witnesses to be very careful about the comments you may make to the media or to others after you complete your evidence. Committee hearings are not intended to provide a forum for people to make adverse reflections about others under the protection of parliamentary privilege. In that regard, it is important that witnesses focus on the issues raised by the inquiry's terms of reference and avoid naming individuals unnecessarily. All witnesses have a right to procedural fairness, according to the procedural fairness resolution adopted by the House in 2018. There may be some questions that a witness can only answer if they have more time or with certain documents to hand. And in those circumstances, witnesses are advised that they can take a question on notice and provide an answer within 21 days. Today's proceedings are being streamed live and a transcript will be placed on the committee's website once it becomes available. Finally, a few notes on virtual hearing etiquette to minimise disruptions and assist our hand side reporters. Could I please ask committee members to clearly identify who their questions are directed to? And could I ask everyone to please state their name when they begin speaking? Could everyone please mute their microphones when they're not speaking? And please remember to turn your microphones back on when you're getting ready to speak. And there is always at least one person. Even the most seasoned committee members keep committing that sin. If you start speaking while muted, please start your question or answer again so that it can be recorded in the transcript. Members and witnesses should avoid speaking over each other so that we can all be heard clearly. And also to assist Hansard, may I remind members and witnesses to speak directly into the microphone and avoid making comments when your head is turned away. I now welcome our first witnesses. First, Mr Gardner, could you please state your name and position title and swear either an oath or affirmation?
Good morning, Philip Gardner, Deputy Secretary, New South Wales Treasury. I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Thank you, Mr Gardner. Ms Christie, could you please state your name and position title and swear either an oath or affirmation?
Good morning, everyone. Jackie Christie, Executive Director at New South Wales Treasury. I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Thank you. Ms Wilkinson, could you please state your name and position title and then swear either the oath or affirmation?
Cassandra Wilkinson, Executive Director, New South Wales Treasury. I swear the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so help me God.
Thank you, Ms Wilkinson. Would one of you like to start by making a short segment? And if so, please do keep it to no more than a couple of minutes if possible.
Thank you, I think we'll decline an opening statement.
Okay, excellent. Well, thank you very much. We will be rotating questioning between the opposition crossbench and government. And we are going to commence questions with the opposition. Is that you, Mr Graham or Mr Mooki?
Thank you, Chair. I might kick off. John Ryan with a question to Mr Gardner. Firstly, I'd like to, thanks for your appearance firstly. I'd like to commence with some questions about one of the ideas that's been floated publicly today, and that's about decision point signage, giving drivers a choice as they enter some of these toll roads. Both information about the travel time savings that they might make, the benefits of taking a particular toll road, but also about the costs, the current price of the toll road, so that they can measure those up and make a choice as to whether on that day, at that time, they choose to take a toll road or not. Is that the sort of intervention that Treasury in principle would be able to support?
Mr Graham, thank you very much for the question and good morning to you. Look, that is very much an operational matter that we would sort of defer to our colleagues at Transport for New South Wales, who will be better able to sort of assess the implications from a sort of a network utilisation and communication.
Yeah, I'm certainly happy to put it to Transport, but this would have the ACCC in paroxysms. They'd be very happy with this idea. Surely in principle, Treasury would favour this sort of information to consumers? In principle, would you like to support this idea this morning?
I think, you know, better transparency and communication to consumers is always something that we would support. I sort of would defer though to Transport for New South Wales and the operators of the toll roads in this particular instance, to sort of give a definitive answer on that.
Thank you. I'd like to ask some questions about toll reforms. There's a sense in Sydney that drivers are really at the limit of what they can pay in terms of tolls, that families are really stretched, keeping up with the toll burden. It has led to calls for more toll relief. Has Treasury performed modelling about what that toll relief might look like?
Mr Graham, as you'll be aware, the Premier recently announced that there will be a review of tolls sort of undertaken and we are currently undertaking that. And, you know, the terms of reference of that review allow us to sort of look at the concession and rebate arrangements that are in place and make any recommendations that we may do that might improve the operations of the networks, you know, the consistency of road pricing, anything that may improve, you know, the fairness and equity of the whole system. And so, yes, the answer is yes, we're having a look at it and we'll be providing some options to government during the course of this year on those matters.
And what's the deadline you've been given under that terms of reference?
To provide, well, look, we'll be expecting to provide recommendations during the course of this year. We're still very much in the early planning phase of the review, so I don't have sort of specific deadlines or timelines. A range of things or some things that may well be implementable, you know, reasonably quickly. And there'll be some things that could take, you know, significant periods of time to put in place.
And when was that review actually signaled to Treasury? When did the starter gunfire from your point of view as a senior official?
Around the same time the Premier made the announcement. And obviously, the Christmas and shutdown period was a period where we sort of couldn't engage with, sort of internally and with external advisers. So that process has been underway through the course of January and this month so far.
And what, and give us your description about exactly what you're looking at. Is everything on the table here? Or have you got certain focuses?
Yeah, so the things that are in scope are the sort of the current arrangements in place, concessions, rebates and the tolling arrangements that are in place in the network at the moment.
Yep. So when it comes to the question drivers are asking, will there be some toll relief options considered by the government? You're saying that is in scope, that is one of the things that you'll be looking at, that potentially the government will be looking at when it comes to this review?
That's correct.
And let me take you to some of the specific options, some of the ideas that have been floated. I want you to tell me whether these are in scope or any of these off the table. Things like, you've already referred to the first one, registration relief, the existing schemes, looking at some potential expenditure. That, that's clearly in scope for your review.
That's correct.
Things like cashback, is that something that could be considered under your review?
Look, I mean, cashback is part of the existing arrangements, so we definitely have to assess the merits of the existing arrangements and, you know, potentially consider, you know, sort of if they would be applicable more broadly, yes.
A cap on tolls, is that something that's out of scope or could that be considered in the Treasury review?
Again, we'll be providing full range of options to the government. So it is something that could be considered and put forward as an option for the government, yes.
Yeah, just two other options, time of day tolling, clearly something you might look at.
Absolutely, again, something that, I mean, that would, in a lot of instances, the implementability of that, you know, could be particularly challenging. There's obviously a lot of systems and hardware and interaction with the operators of the tolls that sort of need to be considered in order to make that an effective process. And so that's probably part of the longer term range of opportunities that could be considered.
And you've already referred to this one, harmonising tolling across the network. That's one of the issues you'll be looking at as part of this review.
And again, that sort of fits into that longer term bucket of things that could take a significantly longer period of time to consider our options and think through implementation and how that would be undertaken, but yes.
Who are the agencies around the table? Who's the brain trust behind this review?
At the moment, it is a combination, principally a combination of Transport for New South Wales and Treasury, and we'll bring in involvement from other agencies where there may be specific aspects of the review that need their input.
Clearly, one of the things you'll have to look at is the plans for, future plans for tolling on the Harbour Bridge and the Harbour Tunnel. Is that something that forms part of the scope of this review?
One of the specific requirements, because the Harbour Tunnel concession ends in August of this year, is to provide the government with a range of options as to how they might proceed with those tolling arrangements post that time. And then more broadly, as I said, sort of just tolling across the entire network is something that's within the scope of the review. So that would incorporate the bridge as a potential consideration, you know, as within the full suite of options we might put to the government.
And one of the options, again, I want to ask, is this off the table, is two-way tolling on those, the bridge and the tunnel, that hasn't been excluded from that review, has it?
We haven't specifically excluded anything at this stage around the things that we may or may not advise the government on, no.
Yeah, so that from your point of view as a senior official, that's, that could be one of the things you recommend. Government may not like that or they may not choose to follow. That's a policy decision for them. But for you, it could be one of the things you recommend.
Conceptually, at this stage, absolutely, it could be one of those things that could be taken into account, put on the table. You know, once we sort of do the work, we'll obviously have a better feel as to how to narrow the options. But conceptually, at this stage, it could easily be considered.
And the time's ticking on that, those concessions end in the middle of the year. How quickly do you need to put a view to government on that question in particular?
Well, the most significant issue with respect to that is probably the Western Harbour Tunnel, because that's the time when you have, you know, potentially another crossing of the harbour. So it may be that the situation, the government may not make a decision on that for some years to come, and it may be a decision for a future government.
Yep. I'd like, thank you for those answers. Can I ask that you table the terms of reference for that review with the committee on notice?
I'll take that on notice.
Thank you. I'd like to turn now to the question that I wrote to indicate I would ask some questions about the opposition would be asking you the answer to these questions. And that is the total toll cost for drivers as they move around, the state on these toll roads. The committee has had to expand its terms of reference. We've had to invite a new government submission within 14 days because the first government submission was totally silent on this question about what are the costs for drivers. There's plenty in the government submission about the benefits and all of that is really well expressed in the government's submission about the benefits of these very, you know, beautiful pieces of engineering, these roads, the benefits there, but the costs are silent on the costs for drivers. Do you accept that it's in the public interest for this question to be answered, that drivers have a right to know how much they're paying in tolls in total under contracts signed by this government?
So, you know, obviously, drivers, you know, and I'm not being facetious here, Mr Graham, but drivers do know how much tolls they are paying under the current tolling arrangements. They're sort of, you know, they obviously, there are contracts and those are fully disclosed in terms of the tolls that individual drivers are paying. And therefore, at one level, you know, they have full disclosure around the things that are important to them as an individual driver.
But as taxpayers, you're saying we can know individually, but we can't know altogether the total toll burden across New South Wales for drivers?
So there's a couple of reasons why, you know, we sort of don't, well, for a start, obviously, West Connects have, you know, through their testimony, sort of shared with you the amount of money that has been paid by tolls on the West Connects network. And that's that $1.96 billion that they disclosed. And, you know, obviously, we disclose through our budget process incremental tolls that are received directly by the government. So on that basis, you know, people using the tolls and taxpayers in New South Wales do have visibility on the amount of tolls that have been paid in the network and including the government-owned toll roads.
But Mr Gardner, if I sign up for a phone contract, if I buy just a mobile phone at a store, one of the things I have to be told is the minimum price of the contract. You're saying for New South Wales drivers with toll roads, there's no indication here about what's the minimum price that you have signed, taxpayers up for, under these contracts? How much are we paying in total in tolls under contracts signed by this government?
So I'm not quite sure of the premise of the question, Mr Graham. Like, obviously, the tolls are known to drivers and they know what we're paying. And between ourselves and West Connects, we disclose the amount of tolls paid by road users in New South Wales. So I'm sort of not quite understanding what the missing part of that puzzle is that you're trying to get at.
Yeah, what I want to know is how much does that add up to over time as a minimum? We know what the tolls have been paid in the last financial year. We know the Transurban component of that, you've just put it on the record again then. We know that drivers are doing a million toll trips a day. We know that the total at the moment is about $2.3 billion in tolls per year. How much in total, under contracts which have been signed by this government, will drivers pay over the life of the contract? These are heavily regulated agreements, the prices are set. How much will drivers pay in total?
And look, the future toll revenues is a, you know, highly uncertain number. Like, obviously, things are changing really, really rapidly around road utilisation. We've got COVID work, we've got changes in the work patterns of how people work from home and where they work in the office, where they live. We've got huge discrepancy, you know, like if you look at, you know, you can think about things like autonomous vehicles, we don't know what the future road network will look like. We don't know what sort of future rebates or concession agreements will be in place from different governments. So those numbers that you are sort of looking for a source from are highly uncertain numbers. And, you know, we wouldn't, you know, want to put anything out there that's sort of, you know, with that degree of uncertainty around it.
Mr Gardner, they're not that uncertain. I mean, the prices are set under these contracts, they're very clear. They could be higher, but I'm asking about the minimums here. Inflation, you have to make assumptions about for the budget. There is an inflation assumption of, I think it's two and a half percent that you made for the West Connects business model. That's correct, isn't it?
I don't have that on top of my head. Ms Christie might be able to answer that question.
Ms Christie?
No, I don't know what assumption was made in relation to CPI in terms of the West Connects.
Yeah, well, I might, I might invite you to take that on notice, but that is the assumption that sits behind the West Connects business model. Treasury has to make an assumption about inflation for the budget every year, isn't that correct, Mr Gardner?
Yeah, well, look, absolutely, and we have very long-term expectations, sort of forecast for inflation set out in the international report, so, and in a sort of budget estimates, every budget papers every year, so yes.
Yeah. One of few other variables is the traffic assumptions. Again, not that difficult. At the moment, growing about four percent a year, obviously impacted by COVID. There really are few variables here that impact on the total toll cost paid by drivers under contracts signed by this government. You had to estimate it to sell West Connects, didn't you? You had to make assumptions.
Correct, we had to make some assumptions at the time, but those are assumptions that were made, you know, at a point in time, they're based on, you know, some very complex modelling and they're specifically for the government and the other proponents in the process and their finances. It's.
Well, tell us what they were, tell us using those assumptions, how much a toll, how much are drivers paying in tolls under the West Connects contract between now and 2060?
So look, this, in addition to the reasons I've talked about, the uncertainty of those forecasts, you know, there's a couple of other reasons why we don't disclose the data that we use. One of them is that, you know, those revenue forecasts are a significant part of the analysis that we use to support, you know, the scoping study and the cabinet submissions to enable the government to make its decision around, you know, whether to proceed with a transaction in the first place and then to award the successful contract. And so there are.
Mr Gardner, you sold the road, the transaction's gone, you'll be next visiting this question in 2060.
I understand that.
Surely this is a state secret?
Well, no, just to reiterate, there will be elements of cabinet confidentiality around past cabinet decisions that relate to that. But the second thing is that, you know, we're undertaking this toll review. Part of it may be that we do look to renegotiate these concessions. I'm not saying that there was any certainty around that, but it may well be. It could compromise that process, it could compromise any future negotiations, future concessions, any potential future monetisations. Our job is to protect the integrity of future processes, private sector negotiations in the private sector. And a very important aspect of this is.
Mr Gardner, I want to stop you there because I'm putting a position that it's in the public interest for drivers to know how much they're paying in tolls. How does that compromise the public interest from a Treasury point of view? Why is that a secret? Why can't we just know what we've been signed up to pay? This is money coming out of taxpayers' pockets, drivers' pockets. Why do you want to hide that number? I can understand some of the other aspects of the model. Why will no one say how much drivers are paying in tolls?
So, I mean, obviously, touched on the uncertainty, the cabinet confidentiality of the data. And then the third thing is that, you know, this is sensitive commercial information. Any sophisticated investor, equity analyst could take that number, can back solve for revenue profile. That can, that can impact, you know, the equity analyst's view on the Transurban business. It can impact on the financeability of the West Connects entities. It has a lot of consequences. And look, you know, as you know, and Transurban made the statement in their, in their testimony, they are a listed company, they are precluded under restrictions in the Corporations Act from providing forecasts on themselves. And so, you know, we're not going to put ourselves in a position where the government is undermining the intent of that legislation and compromising.
Mr Gardner, I'm going to hand to my colleague, I'm going to hand to my colleague now, although I'm going to continue this line of questioning in the second block, but I might hand to my colleague.
Thank you, Mr Gardner, and greetings to you and to the other Treasury officials and thought it's worth happy Valentine's Day. Can I just press my, on with some of that, the point you just made there, Mr Gardner? I accept that it might be in Transurban's interest not to release these numbers. But why is Transurban's interest the identical to the Treasury's interest in this respect?
For different reasons. We both have interest in the numbers not being disclosed. And one of them obviously is, you know, we don't want to undermine the intent of the legislation and the purpose of the Corporations Act. So that is in the government's sort of interest to not be seen to be compromising those restrictions that Transurban has on their own, on making forecasts. So that's an important principle.
Mr Gardner, Transurban discloses more to the stock market than Treasury discloses to the Parliament in terms of how much money is earned and how much revenue forecast that they do provide, albeit not to a specific road. I mean, surely we're in a position where the most basic of questions, which is, are we, are we, even at the time of the transaction, how much are taxpayers going to be handing over? I just don't, I invite you again to reconsider your position here because that transaction is done. You can almost backward calculate it if you had to, but all we're asking for is Treasury to give a validation as to what it was at the time we entered into this contract. Do we at least get that information? Or is that also beyond the remit of what you're capable of telling us today?
That is, for the reasons I've set out, sort of something that we, you know, we don't disclose that, that set of data.
Okay, I just want to clarify just a few other details that came up in my colleague's earlier line of question. Just in respect to this review, does this review have the ability to assess toll impact on heavy vehicle?
It does have the ability to have a look at that, yes.
So in terms of what's in scope, is it in scope that you will be examining the truck multiplier?
Look, all aspects of the current tolling arrangements are in scope, so technically, yes.
Technically, yes, okay. And then just equally following up, my colleague did ask you some questions about the CPI escalator. Given that there are a variety of these escalators across the network, are we, is it in review in scope to determine which is best practice?
We could certainly give, well, we certainly give consideration as to how we might think about that for future concessions, yes.
And then equally, my colleague did sort of ask you, when do you expect this review to be complete? I think you said that options will go to government this year. But this, that's a slightly, I guess, I'll push you for a slightly more nuanced answer. When do you expect Treasury to have completed the review?
Look, I think there are probably two or three stages to the review. There are things that can be done probably, you know, within a relatively short period of time and others that could take quite some significant period of time. So I'm not really, I mean, as I said, we're still in the very much the planning phases of the review. So I don't have specific sort of deadlines and timeframes for particular parts of the review. But I would say, you know, we would need to wrap up our recommendations to the government probably in the sort of third or fourth quarter this year.
Okay, is there an opportunity for public input into this review?
We are currently, we could consider public input at this stage, that is not a part of the process.
Well, is it going to consider industry input?
At this stage, we haven't given consideration to what external input we will have in the process.
Okay, so does, for example, the heavy vehicle industry have the ability to make a submission or?
Look, again, I haven't, we haven't given full consideration to what external consultation we may do through this process, so I can't give a definitive answer on that.
This is an internal departmental review, is what it sounds like, Mr Gardner, as opposed to an external review or an inquiry. This is really just an internal process.
It's a review, so yeah, absolutely, it hasn't been set out that we necessarily need to do external consultations. So we'll determine what the appropriate consultation we can, we should do during the course of the review.
So perhaps this is a, sorry, your time has expired unfortunately, Mr Mooki. We'll come back to you, but just on this point of the review. So when did the review begin? What date did it commence?
I don't, oh, look, I'll take that on notice, I don't have a specific date. You know, obviously, we've started the process of review. I mean, it's basically starting right now, you know, it's, as of sort of two or three weeks ago, you know, we were engaging consultants, we haven't finally completely finalised that process. We've been doing some work internally. There's no, I can't give you, I don't think there's a particular date where we sort of all get around and say, actually, we started today.
Yes, sure, but recently?
Recently.
Yeah, so, and this is, you know, a review generally into the tolling system in Sydney and what changes could be made, is that correct?
That is correct, yep.
We recently conducted a call for papers through the upper house and I obtained a number of documents. A number of them from as far back as, well, at least 2019, refer to the toll reform ongoing. So these are documents between Transurban and Transport, sorry, and Treasury in relation to market soundings and other things in relation to projects that are already referring to this upcoming toll reform. What are those documents referring to, do you think?
I'm at a bit of a disadvantage here, Miss Boyd, I'm not aware of those documents. And so I don't have any sort of insights into what they're referring to.
Are you aware of Transurban's suggestions over the years for tolling reform?
Look, I am aware, I mean, I read Transurban's input into this particular review and really, it hardly, if at all, sort of touched on any aspects of reform. So, you know, I'm not aware of anything that's very contemporaneous or contemporary in terms of Transurban sort of putting forward, you know, anything apart from the fact that they'd be willing to engage with the government on it.
Would it be fair to say that the government has been contemplating tolling reform as part of its general strategy for privatisation of these motorways? as part of its general strategy for privatization of these motorways for a number of years?
Look, I can't sort of speak to what sort of the government has been considering, Miss Boyd. You know, we've been asked to do this review now following the premier's announcement and we're sort of acting on that, but, you know. I haven't had a sense of sort of, you know, other things going on. I think it's constantly something that's in the public domain, sort of, you know, the framework and the level of tolls. And so it's probably something that's sort of general sort of discourse in government. But beyond that, I don't have any particular comments.
Has Transurban ever put a bid in or expressed interest in participating in a motorway project or purchasing one of Sydney's motorways with a consideration of tolling reform as part of that bid?
I'm not aware of that.
Is that something you could take on notice?
I'll absolutely take it on notice.
Thank you. Perhaps we could just turn to, I don't know if you were watching the ACCC's evidence or if you've read the ACCC's evidence to this inquiry?
I have read their evidence and their input into the, their proposal into the submission into the inquiry, yes.
Thank you. The, when we had the ACCC before this committee, they were saying that although, and this is obviously a sort of a layman's explanation, but my interpretation of what they were saying is that although the Westconnex purchase was not seen as, as falling foul of competition rules, they did express concerns about how the New South Wales government conducts future bids and proposals for, for motorway sales. Has the government taken on those recommendations and made any, I guess, taken any action to comply with them going forward?
It's interesting. So if you look at current toll roads that are under, under procurement, so the Western Harbour Tunnel, the M6, in both of those instances, the state is proceeding with a straight sort of design and construct sort of format for those. And they are conceivably toll roads that, that could be done under a similar sort of PPP or concession model as was done with, with Westconnex. And so I think we've always sort of faced into the fact that, you know, competition and getting the best price is something that we'd need to deal with, with future concessions. So I don't think specifically in response to the ACCC, but I certainly, we're conscious of the issues that the ACCC has raised. And then really it's up to individual future governments to consider it with individual toll roads. And I think, you know, everyone, the government at the time, whenever they're making these decisions, will be taking that, those, those considerations into account. So it's a very, you know, absolutely agree with, you know, the premise that's been put forward there. We need to consider those with every toll road as they come up.
So, and in particular, one of the recommendations that really stuck out was the one around basically taking action to facilitate a more competitive process in the future, given that Transurban owns so much of our toll road system. And that involves greater transparency and giving of information. Is that something that the government's taking seriously?
So, I mean, we made every effort in the, in the second part of the sale process for the 49% to give as much time and, and data as we possibly could to support other participants in the process. So we're very conscious of perceived or potential informational sort of asymmetries in this system. And so, you know, whenever we run a process or think about it, we'll do everything we can to sort of level the playing field, absolutely. So again, you know, valid points that we'll take on board, you know, with, with respect to future processes.
Do you see a, a problem or is, no, let me rephrase that. Is Transport, sorry, is Treasury actively considering ways to increase future competition for the potential sale of the Western Harbour Tunnel in light of the tension with that being a toll road versus the single way tolling on the, sorry, what am I trying to say? Let me start again. Is there, given that the Western Harbour Tunnel is going to, no, I've, I've lost the, what I was trying to say. Is there a, is the current tolling arrangements with the Sydney Harbour Tunnel and the Sydney Harbour Bridge an obstacle to the potential sale of the Western Harbour Tunnel?
That's a very interesting but hypothetical question, Miss Boyd. I think it's a difficult one, would probably have to give some deeper consideration to. And then one of the principles for good network operations is that where you've got, you've got consistency in approach between sort of competing sort of avenues. So if you add the Western Harbour Tunnel, you've got the Western Harbour Tunnel, the bridge and the Sydney Harbour Tunnel. And if you had inconsistent approaches to tolling across those three, then it could cause disruption to the network. So yes, we would have to think through ensuring or understanding the consequences and being willing to make, make decisions that impacted the network based on the different options. So you could conceivably do one model on Western Harbour Tunnel and a different model on the Sydney Harbour Tunnel and the Sydney Harbour Bridge, but you have specific traffic modeling, you know, traffic congestion and productivity issues you've got to face into. And I think that will require a significant amount of consideration and thinking to sort of resolve all those issues and be able to put, you know, the sort of different options and pros and cons to the government of the day that has to make a decision on the Western Harbour Tunnel. As I said, you know, that, that, that project is not going to come online until 2028. And so there's a long time and a lot of opportunity between now and then for different governments to give consideration to that. And I, you know, it's very much, at this stage, it's a very sort of hypothetical situation because it doesn't have to be dealt with for quite some period of time.
Will your toll, your tolling review consider that issue? Is that part and parcel? Is that something you're thinking about?
Look, it has to give consideration for known information. You know, we, we would be remiss of us not to take into account the fact that the Western Harbour Tunnel is under procurement and that it will come online within that sort of timeframe. So I, I think if we were not to take it into account in any form, we would not be doing our job and advising the government appropriately. But I would have to say, you know, we, we haven't yet landed a point where we might make specific recommendations about that because of the timing. And it may be a matter for a future government to, to resolve.
Sure. So it would be reasonable then for drivers to anticipate a two-way toll on the bridge at some point in the next decade, then you would summarize what you're saying.
No, I actually don't think that's a reasonable assumption because, you know, that's a matter for governments to make, government decisions to make at the moment. You've got sort of one-way tolling on the two crossings and the eastern distributor. And so, you know, governments could decide to maintain that, those arrangements, either replicating that with Western Harbour Tunnel or having two-way tolling. They just need to work out the, the traffic and productivity consequences and make an informed decision sometime in the future.
A final question from me and then I'll hand back to the opposition for a few minutes. I'm trying to understand from Treasury's perspective, and perhaps you could just help, help me out. When you have a private toll road operator charging tolls that then become the subject of a cashback or a concession paid for by the government, how does that, I guess, get accounted for or justified by the government when it's effectively delivering more government money directly into Transurban's pockets?
So, you know, that is a feature of those types of concessions and, you know, cashbacks, that it is arguably one of the sort of redistributions of income from the taxpayers of New South Wales to, you know, specific motorists and to the operators of the toll roads. And we need to take that into account when we are advising the government on, you know, what the right options were. Certainly, you know, it starts to skew the signals around sort of utilization and a user charger system, which the toll roads are, if you actually start to give concessions and rebates, then you start to distort that model. And arguably, you know, the, the beneficiaries are a small number of road users, the recipients, at the expense of broader taxpayers in other geographies in New South Wales, people who don't use cars, you know, maybe sort of people who use the public transport system. And it arguably, you know, is to the benefit of the toll road operator. So we have to think very carefully about all the different dimensions. When we talk about fairness and equity of, of the road systems, then we need to think very broadly around how we might sort of, you know, advise the government on any changes that they may want to consider.
And that payment for concessions and, and cashbacks and things, is that considered in the cost benefit analysis when you are selling a, a new motorway?
It's part of the, I mean, understanding the traffic volumes under those different concessions and rebates is, I actually don't recall whether that was sort of, sort of modeled in it. So I might need to take that on notice, Miss Boyd.
Specifically, I'm, I'm talking about the, the alternative between keeping it in government hands and then that being a much easier thing to, as you say, distribute wealth and try and reduce economic inequality versus the situation where a private toll road operator is always getting their profit regardless and it is the government that's having to stump up to sort of adjust the impact on drivers.
I do not recall, I, I mean, obviously the different, there's a very different scale in these different sort of cashback and rebate schemes. But look, I don't recall specific consideration of that being given in the business cases on those concessions, no.
Thank you. Back to the opposition.
Thank you, Che. Mr. Gardner, I might just start touching on two aspects of that review. You've answered some questions about industry input and potential future industry input, and that's still yet to be decided. Have you had any discussions with the private toll road operator at this point about what the options are?
No, no, Mr. Graham, we haven't engaged, I mean, I presume you are referencing particularly Transurban. So we have not currently engaged with them on this review. You know, it is a reasonably high chance that we will do that during the course of the review, but we need to, you know, very clearly make sure that we, that we ourselves determine what the purpose and scope of that engagement is and, and what the governance and property arrangements around that engagement might be. And at this stage, we haven't done that, but I, you know, they have obviously a lot of information.
Yeah, that sounds like a sensible way to think about things, but it goes to the timing that you haven't taken that step yet. It's unlikely that there's hope coming soon for drivers, given that that's almost a necessary step for you to take action here. Is that a fair comment?
It, look, it depends on, there may be some things that are actually quite easily agreed between ourselves and the operators. And there may be some things that may well take a significantly longer period of time. So I wouldn't rule out outcomes being able to be delivered in a relatively short period of time. We just need to undertake the work and, and engage.
And just give us a couple of examples of the sorts of things that might fall in that bucket of things that could be easily agreed. What sorts of things might that be?
Well, I mean, conceptually, there is the tagging systems, right? So they, they have about half the road tags in the system, we have about the other half. And there may be sort of, you know, a reasonable pathway and it's sort of not simple, but a pathway to being able to sort of collate and utilize that information. We, we haven't engaged with them and so as yet we sort of don't really know the dimensions of complexity and technical aspects of that process.
Yeah. Yeah, well, look, I think that's a really useful view. Any other things you, you can point to now? And the reason I ask is one of the frustrations from drivers here is they feel like there's no solution to these problems. So from Treasury's point of view, is there some hope here? Are there some things we could do, given that obviously these prices at the moment are under contract?
Look, I, I think, you know, if you look at the, all the different toll roads across the network, you know, they're not just owned by Transurban. Most of them, probably a reasonable number of them have Transurban and other parties, and they're not common parties across all those concessions. And so you cannot just, you know, sort of talk specifically to one party and agree a sort of a, a change of approach that may sort of net-net, you know, have the right fiscal attributes for the government and taxpayers and for road users. Because there's a lot of sort of, you know, cross sort of, you know, benefits and costs that sit within there. So I just, I just don't want to understate the complexity of anything that might go on with respect to sort of having a look at changing the contracted arrangements that are in place today.
And what, I think that's a strong point. What, what non-contractual arrangements might be on the table? Just talk us through that.
Well, I, I think, Mr. Graham, you sort of touched on a range of them at the outset. We haven't given, you know, we, I don't have the, the full suite of things, but the things that you talked about, things that relate to rebates and concessions and cashbacks and caps are all potentially things that, you know, depending on the implement, implementability of some of them, you know, there's a pathway that doesn't require opening up the, the various contractual arrangements we have in place. But to Miss Boyd's comments, we need to be conscious that that changes traffic volumes, you know, or the potential impact of those things on changing traffic volumes and therefore, you know, sort of changing the commercial outcomes for different parties in the system.
Which consultants have you engaged for the review?
Sorry, I can't disclose that because, excuse me, because we haven't sort of finalized signing of some of the contracts for the consultants. So they'll obviously be disclosed as required.
Could you take that on notice then, once you have signed those contracts and let the committee know? I think the committee's got a right to know which consultants you've engaged at the appropriate time, I think.
I'll take that on notice, yep.
And you, I think, I, I missed slightly what you said, so I just wanted to confirm. You were talking about the toll, I think, on the Western Harbour Tunnel commencing around 2020, aren't you, is that correct?
That is my understanding of the, of the announced opening date of Western Harbour Tunnel, yes.
Yeah, yeah. So that, that, yeah. So from a driver's point of view, tolling actually starting on, on that day, yep. And I just want to refer back to your comments about the balance to be struck here between the, you know, costs drivers might be, and all the balance of taxpayers' funds generally. I thought that was quite a good statement of some of the things to be balanced here. And that is why I want to return to these questions about the costs that drivers have to pay. We're being asked as a parliamentary committee to weigh up the benefits and costs of toll roads. Now, you've given us acres of material on the benefits, but not a zag on the costs. That is the government's submission. We're inviting a second one and I hope you give us a better answer this time. We're trying to do our job to weigh up the benefits and the costs, but it's very difficult without Treasury being clear, what is the total cost you have signed taxpayers up to under these contracts? Are you aware that the base case financial models have been released in the past for some of these roads?
I'm not aware of the base case financial models being released publicly for, for these roads, no.
Not for these roads, but for example, Mr. Gardner, on the ninth of November 2005, the base case financial models for the Lane Cove Tunnel and the Westlink M7 were released. They were tabled in the Legislative Assembly. Can you identify any harm to the public interest that occurred from tabling all these financial models in the parliament?
Look, I'm not aware of the specific situations, Mr. Graham, around the disclosure of those base case financial models. And so I, I don't have a point of comparison to make as to why or why not those were disclosed. Obviously, we've set out our reasons for, for not disclosing the models in the instances of Westconnex and the more recent concessions.
Yeah, just to be clear about your position, and you put this on the public record before under some detailed questioning from my colleague, Mr. Mooki. You believe that base case financial model for Westconnex should not be released until after 2060? That's still your view?
That is, you know, still our view. That is, you know, still our view for the, and, and again, like, I probably sort of elaborated today, I was sort of more fully on the reasons for those. Um, and so, you know, but it, yeah, continues to be our position.
Would you release it in twenty sixty, or would it still be a state secret then?
Oh, that's too, that's, it's too far in the future, too hypothetical, Mr. Graham.
No, it's not, Mr. Gardner. I am asking you in principle, does Treasury support the release of the base case financial model after twenty sixty or not?
Uh, look, I'll have to take that one on notice. I, I.
Well, point, point of order on this, it's purely a hypothetical in terms of asking Mr. Gardner, who I suspect is not going to be part of Treasury in twenty sixty, I could be wrong. Um, but what Treasury will do in twenty sixty and what Treasury's position would be in twenty sixty?
Uh, to the point of order, Chair, uh, this actually is a crucial uh principle that the committee should consider whether these are published or not. There was a previous finding of the previous tolling inquiry that they should be. Um, I want to understand in principle, is Treasury proposing keeping these a state secret forever? Or just during the life of these contracts? Now, I do want to press this position.
Having heard the point of order, um, I do understand the point that's being made, and I, I think um Mr. Gardner is, is well placed uh to respond. It's not something he can answer. Um, but to the extent that you can respond to Mr. Graham's question, I would encourage you to do so.
So from a, look, from a first principles perspective, Mr. Graham, a lot of the reasons that we would not disclose it would fall away. But to Mr. Barlow's point, I absolutely, you know, will not be here in sort of thirty eight years' time. Uh, and therefore will not know sort of, you know, the, the basis on which a future Treasury, Treasurer would sort of determine if that should be disclosed, but um, you know, a lot of the reasons around the financeability are, are sort of crossing over against the obligations of the company listed company under the Corporations Act will definitely fall away. And so there'll probably be a lot sort of stronger basis on which you would disclose that information.
Right. Thank you for that answer. Now, I'm not asking, I mean, these base case financial models have been tabled in the Parliament before. I'm not asking for that. Uh, that is what the last inquiry recommended, by the way, but I'm not putting that view to you. I'm simply saying, why can't we know how much drivers pay just the revenue in? Why is that a secret? That doesn't compromise any of the financial considerations you're referring to.
Uh, look, absolutely, it, it does. If we um sort of, you know, publicly disclose the sum total of the revenue, and as I said, you know, it can be back-sold against the sort of, you know, profile of the, of the toll roads. Um, it can be used to um you know, by investors and equity analysts to, to sort of make determinations themselves as to, you know, whether or not um the, the party's paid the right price. It could impact, impact the financeability of the toll roads. It could impact the share price of Transurban. Um, and as I said, we are you know, currently undertaking this, this review. Um, uh, it may be that part of the review is to give consideration to changing some of these concessions and arrangements. Um, West Connect is just one of several concessions in New South Wales. Um, it therefore sort of gives an imbalance of degree of disclosure around one of the concessions relative to others. There's a whole range of different reasons why we wouldn't still, you know, will not disclose um those revenue numbers for that concession.
Mr. Gardner, I'll tell you why that answer makes me angry. It's because this money is coming out of the pockets of working people. It's coming out of the pockets of people in Sydney who don't have public transport options. It's coming out of the pockets of people who don't have the luxury of commuting into the city. Tradies, for example, who have to drive all around the city. Can you understand why it leads to deep community suspicion when Treasury won't even be upfront about that basic fact, how much drivers are paying in tolls in total under contracts your agency recommended, your, this government signed off on?
Uh, and look, you know, I, I, I hear what you're saying, Mr. Graham, um, but I reaffirm our position on, on not disclosing that information.
One of the concerns about the extreme secrecy surrounding these contracts is about the compensation clauses. What the minister says are very, very significant uh compensation clauses that the public might have to pay if these terms are varied. What can you tell us about the amount of taxpayer money that might be owed in compensation if there are changes made to these contracts? As a result, including as a result of potential recommendations from your review?
Uh, look, it's, it's a very hypothetical scenario. I mean, we haven't got to that point. Um, you know, anything that would be done, uh, you know, under sort of, you know, under the review that may um be in the domain of um, you know, changing their concessions. It's too hard to tell at this point in time. Um, so I, 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 I don't have an answer to that question.
Mr. Gardner, it's not hypothetical. The, I should be clear, it was the former Minister, Minister Constance, who talked about this publicly, very, very significant compensation clauses. What are they?
Uh, I mean, this, look, in every concession, there is a range of compensation clauses that sort of go in both directions between the different parties. I don't have the specific, that is, those concession agreements are between the Department of Transport and the operators uh of those businesses. So I'm not familiar with the specific details of those concession clauses.
Can you give us some assurance that Treasury reviewed those compensation clauses? Surely that's in the public interest for Treasury to have a close eye to those details? What we might have to pay out of the public purse to the, a private operator?
I can absolutely assure you that when those concession agreements were entered into, Treasury had a strong oversight. Uh, you know, that they are done under PPP uh arrangements, those, that, um, you know, we have a role to play in working in evaluating those models and the frameworks. But, you know, as I said, I'm, you know, not that familiar with them because um that's um obviously something that's uh agreed between Transport and, and the concession operators, and it's their responsibility to answer those types of questions.
So you don't know what they are, but you're reviewing the tolling arrangements. Can you give us some assurance you'll be rapidly finding out?
Well, we'll, to the extent that anything that we might do that might change any of the concessions does intersect with any of the, the, the compensation arrangements in any of the concessions, then we'll very, very quickly get up to speed uh and take them into account in advising the government.
And again, I want to ask you this in principle, because I think this is, we regard, we rely on Treasury to defend these important public principles of our public money. In principle, um, why don't we know more? Why don't we know something, anything about the very, very significant compensation that might have to be handed out of the Treasury vault and rolled down the road to the headquarters of a private business? Why can't you tell us anything about that in principle? Surely some of this, it's in the public interest that it should be known.
So there are quite a lot of details. If you actually look on our website, there is actually like a sixty-page summary of the West Connect concessions. There's quite a lot of information embedded in those.
Absolutely.
Um, and so, uh, you know, I'd need to take advice on any sort of what details we could or couldn't provide beyond what is in that, but, you know, a lot of it is, as we've talked about, sort of commercially sensitive arrangements between a different government agency and the operators of those concessions. And obviously, there is an imperative to maintain sort of the commercial confidentiality, confidentiality around those arrangements.
All right. I'm gonna hand to my colleague again at that point, Mr. Gardner, although I do want to come back and um uh, press you at least once more on um some of this total toll cost. So I'll just alert you to that now as I did in writing before.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you to my colleague. Uh, Mr. Gardner, I just want to push for some clarifications that arose out of that line of questioning. Uh, firstly, in respect to the compensation clauses, um, you referred us to the sixty-page summary of um some of the aspects of the concession deeds. But I think that RMS and now Transport for New South Wales has previously published the concession deeds in full. That's your recollection as well?
Uh, I look, I don't have any specific, I mean, we, we, a lot of our concession deeds are uh public, but I don't think they're in full. There would be some redacted aspects of those documents.
Well, I think you'll find, um, I recall reading it in the two hundred pages on the West Connect M four widening concession deed, which was quite the thrill. And it, it was quite clear in terms of what we're liable for when it comes to compensation. It says that we have to pay at least what they otherwise would, in my summary of it, they would have earned in the base case financial model. That's what the concession deed says. That's, that's in accordance with what you understand as well?
Uh, that is a general principle. I understand to be consistent with compensation arrangements. I can't speak for the specifics as it relates to uh that particular concession.
And the reason why we don't know isn't that we, is that we don't know what the base case financial model is. It's the one piece of information that is missing. Um, everything else is publicly available. Um, i- is there any uh reason why you can't even give us an estimate of the base case financial model, or are you accepting that as a result of the decision of the government to withhold the base case financial model from the public domain? We'll just never know what we're up for in compensation?
Well, I mean, compensation is, you know, would only happen in sort of very specific circumstances. Um, and it's in, in very, very, at this stage, very, very hypothetical. Um, uh, you know, scenarios that we could be talking about. And, and so I I sort of, you know, don't know. I've got a, like, can't specifically provide and answer that question.
But I, but do you accept that in any, you flagged earlier, did you not, that as a result of the review that you were doing, that that might lead to renegotiation or a move towards a more network model, or at least changes to existing contract arrangements? You said that before.
That's right, yeah.
And the baseline from the operator or now the owner of these, or the lease of, and therefore the controller of these assets is that they're not going to agree to anything, which if, if they earn less than what they would otherwise be earning according to the base case financial model. Do you agree with that in principle?
Uh, no, I don't agree with that in principle. There will be some model that will need to be developed, but we may sort of, you know, undertake some new traffic modeling to, and financial modeling to determine that, so.
They've told us, I mean, Transurban came before this inquiry and said that they're not going to agree to any changes that leave them worse off.
Exactly. Completely understand that. But what's the baseline of worse off? Maybe something that could be sort of, you know, sort of redetermined based on contemporary, up-to-date modeling, or it could be.
The base case financial.
Yes, exactly. Could be that.
But see, this is the point then, like, we don't know whether or not the first deal you agree to is any good, because we haven't seen the base case financial model. We have no idea whether the next one's going to be any better, because we haven't seen the base case financial. Do you see why perhaps the public here might feel left out of these conversations?
Look, you know, I think you're, you know, going down a line of questioning that the trans, the submission from Transport sort of, you know, sort of set out the significant amount of oversight of these processes that is undertaken when we enter into these concessions. Uh, and so I, you know, obviously, we are having to use the, you know, we're having to operate with the commercial confidentiality framework that we do and the cabinet confidentiality and the, the risks around, you know, prejudicing future concessions to the basis on which we, you know, sort of moderate the amount of disclosure we make.
Mr. Gardner, in response to an earlier question, what, as to why uh you were in a position to release it, you nominated three sort of reasons as to why you think that you shouldn't. The first amongst them was uh that it might allow equity and other analysts to judge whether or not what was paid for was good or bad. Uh, it might have an impact on Transurban's uh share price, and it would allow people to judge whether or not forecasts have been met. Can I again ask you to explain to us why does uh Transurban's share price a relevant consideration for Treasury? And why should it be a relevant consideration for this inquiry? I mean, I accept from their perspective it's a relevant consideration, but why is it a relevant consideration for the Treasury that would therefore cause the Treasury to inhibit the release of public information?
So I, I think, you know, I did answer this question previously, Mr. Mooki, that it is. Um, we don't want to be uh undermining the intent of, you know, the legislation in the Corporations Act around uh the restraint, restrictions on companies to provide forecasts. Uh, and it's, you know, wherever possible, we should not sort of seek to put information into the public domain that um, you know, might otherwise compromise the financeability or sort of valuation of these companies.
Sorry, I don't follow. Um, at what point did that become a principle of the Treasury? The Treasury should impede uh not releasing information if it's likely to have an impact on a private company's share price?
So I set out sort of, I guess, three different layers of the response to this question. This is just one of the three. So there's the elements around cabinet confidentiality. There's the elements around prejudicing the, you know, the functioning of government around future concession negotiations. And then there's the element around um, you know, the actual lack of certainty around uh the information in terms of just, you know, we don't know what will not happen. We, you know, we don't have a crystal ball around the future. So this is just one of those elements, Mr. Mooki.
Okay. Um, you made the point about the, the base, my, my colleague was asking you about whether or not Treasury was going to release the base case financial review after twenty sixty, and I'm troubled by your lack of confidence in your own immortality, Mr. Gardner, when it comes to that first point. Second point is, uh, uh, we're in this sort of absurd position where the actual cabinet submission will become public decades before the actual base case financial model under the Public Records Act. I mean, cabinet confidentiality only applies for thirty years. The base case financial year is going to be secret to twenty sixty. How, how is, surely that's going to have some factor on Treasury's attitude as to whether you're going to release the information? I mean, it would be absurd that we see the cabinet submission, but not the actual financial model. We have to wait a decade for it. It's the worst cliffhanger I can imagine, Mr. Gardner, when it comes to public release.
Uh, it is a matter I hadn't taken into account uh previously, Mr. Mooki, and I'll have to take some advice on that one.
Could you on notice tell us how Treasury intends to reconcile? It's obligated, well, the government's obligation to release it under the Public Record Act, the cabinet submission, and Treasury's desire not to release a base case financial model until twenty sixty, if you don't mind?
I will take that on notice.
Thank you. Um, the other point I just wanted to clarify was in respect to the consultants um aspect. Just to confirm, you are using consultants to assist you in this review?
We are, yes.
And um you are currently sourcing them?
We are in the very late processes of sourcing them, yes.
And how are they being sourced?
Uh, through a limited contested competitive tender process.
And when did that start?
Uh, the middle of January.
Okay. And that's going to which panel? The consulting panel or?
Uh, so we've got strategy consultants and traffic consultants, uh, and, you know, ultimately, when they will have a broader array of consultants, so, yeah.
Okay. And do you have a budget for the, the consultant spend here?
Uh, we have, uh, at this stage, we're absorbing it within the Treasury budget, so we don't have a specific sort of named budget on the project, no.
Okay. Um, I have other lines of questioning, but they are new, so I might just return to my colleague uh and let him take over from me, if that's okay, Chair.
Great. Thank you. Thank you. I might uh return to uh Mr. Gardner. Mr. Gardner, has, in the course of your work or your time in the Treasury, has any minister asked you that question, how much are drivers paying in tolls in total under these contracts?
No.
Has the Premier?
Uh, no. I don't, I certainly don't recall it, but, you know, my strongest recollection is no.
Yeah, so this, this question just hasn't come up in the course of your professional work at Treasury until this inquiry?
Uh, not from within the government, no. This is, I mean, the, the line of questioning you're putting is the first time we, is the only avenue that this questioning has come to me.
Well, uh, one of the frustrations here is that um everyone's in on this joke except the driver. Uh, the private company knows how much is being paid. The Treasury knows. You had to estimate. You had to estimate before you solved this, how much is being paid in total. Um, the minister knows. I've got a very good idea because Transurban reports to the market. Um, anyone with a calculator and a good set of batteries can uh work out the scale of this, the order of magnitude here. Uh, that is part of the frustration publicly with Treasury's position of what I would describe as extreme secrecy. Uh, can I put to you um an estimate of what it might be that drivers are paying in total in tolls under contracts that are currently in place under this government? And I'll be upfront about what the assumptions are behind that. Uh, in total, under the contracts, the minimum is certainly more than a hundred billion dollars, uh, something like a hundred and fifteen billion dollars in total paid by drivers in tolls under these contracts. Assuming that Assuming that prices increased by the minimum under the contracts, assuming that inflation is the same as the assumptions you made in the Westconnex model, assuming that traffic rose by two and a half percent, although it actually has grown by higher. That's in today's prices, so taking out any, we're not making any claims here about inflated prices down the track in today's prices. And that doesn't include the Western Harbour Tunnel. It doesn't include the M6 Stage One. It doesn't include, for example, the beaches. I'll put to you that number, Mr. Gardner, $115 billion, that you have put people on the hook, drivers to pay in tolls under the life of these contracts. Is that close to the mark from a Treasury point of view?
Mr. Graham, I'm not, I'm not going to either affirm or dispute that particular number. Like, I've sort of set out clearly my thoughts on why we don't disclose them and the significant uncertainty. I mean, obviously, there have been very significant, you know, toll road projects in the past where the differences between forecast numbers and actual numbers, you know, are dramatically different to the, you know, to, to various impacts. And, you know, just there is, we don't know what we don't know about sort of the future to what accurate forecasts to sort of assign any accuracy to forecast them.
So just no information from Treasury on this question? You just don't have a view? State secrets?
Obviously, we did our own modelling for the particular sale processes, but we aren't not willing to put it. We're not willing to put a forecast or a particular number into the public domain, no.
But if we're paying 2.3 billion, tell me if I'm getting warm, if we're paying 2.3 billion now and doing that over 40 years, this number isn't going to be less than 90 billion, is it? Even, that even says toll prices don't go up. I mean, they're going up regularly, four percent a year. It's, it's going to be higher than this, isn't it, Mr. Gardner? Are we getting warm?
Look, again, I, I'm just not going to affirm or dispute sort of any numbers you put forward, Mr. Graham, on this.
Yeah, but we're not going to be paying less in tolls next year. That's very unlikely. Would you agree with that?
I don't have the crystal ball that actually tells us, gives me an answer on that one, no.
Can you see that it's, when, when the premier stands up and says, look, we built Westconnex for $16.8 billion, and we sold Westconnex and some other things actually for just over 20, we've done well. Can you see how that ignores tens of billions of dollars that drivers are also tipping into that equation? That really, if we're weighing this up in the public interest, how is the committee supposed to weigh up the costs and the benefits if you won't be clear how much drivers are paying?
So, Mr. Graham, if I could sort of just give you my view on this. It is deeply flawed logic to try and associate a revenue stream over a long period of time with an assessment of value for money. Like, it's a bit like saying, you know, BHP earns this amount of money, adding that up for the next 40 years and saying that's what BHP should trade for on the publicly listed stock market. It's a, it's a very flawed concept. And, you know, you've got to obviously look at the costs around the business, the construction costs, the traffic risk, the capital structures. You've, you've got to look at sort of what risk transfer there is between the state and the operator. And you've also got to look at the, the alternative, the counterfactuals. So what happens if we had built that off the states, you know, purely with the states' sort of, you know, 100% contribution to the construction and the debt that sits behind that? You know, what are the things that don't get done if, if we do that? And so the concept of, is this the right decision? Is it value for money from the taxpayer's perspective? Is completely a separate set of analysis to summing up the revenues, future revenue streams for a particular project over a, an extended period of time. The two are just completely, you know, it's sort of, you, you just can't infer one from the other.
Yeah, Mr. Gardner, that is a sensible point of view, and that's, that's why I can understand. I don't support your position that the base case financial model should remain a secret, nor did the last committee. But I can understand why you assert that. But that's why I say releasing this simple information, just what drivers are paying, what's going to come out of their pockets for decades is in the public interest. That's something they would like to know. Do you at least accept that in principle?
Mr. Graham, apart, apart from directly hearing it from you, I have never heard anyone else put that proposition forward. And so I, I don't necessarily agree with your premise.
Well, that's a very brave volunteering of that view. I suspect you might hear it some more from now on, Mr. Gardner. I want to ask about the M5 corridor specifically. You're conducting this review about the impact of tolls. Do you have some idea, can you give us some idea of how much some of the businesses in this corridor are paying? Now the M5 list has gone for, from being free for these businesses, some of which located there because it was free and easily available access to transport. Have you got any sense of how much they're paying in toll bills per month?
No.
Yeah, I mean, some of these operators have shown us what they're paying now, $10,000, $20,000 per month. It's risking putting them out of business. The fact that their trucks are now driving on suburban streets is risking putting the small shopkeepers businesses out of business, the big trucks driving right outside their small stores. This is a major concern. Have you got any sense of this as you review the tolling policy for the government?
Look, I'd have to refer that line of questioning to, to Transport, because obviously there's a lot of network management issues that, and operational issues that fit into that, and so I'm just not in a position to provide any sort of insights on that.
But, Mr. Gardner, you sold this road. Treasury threw this into the transaction. These businesses are now going out of business because of trucks on suburban roads. We've taken significant evidence that the pricing is just wrong, and it's driving trucks from the smallest operators to some of our biggest freight companies off the toll roads onto suburban streets. Is that something you'll be looking at? I'm asking you to look at it in your review. Are you prepared to do that?
I will, I, we will sort of give consideration to working with Transport. And, you know, I would suggest that you have that line of questioning with Transport, because I'm not sort of as familiar with, you know, the issues around, surrounding that and whether it should intersect with the review. So I'll have to talk to my colleagues in Transport before agreeing.
Great. Thank you. And at that point, I'm going to hand back to my colleague to pursue his next line of questioning.
Thank you. Mr. Gardner, I just wanted to ask you a bit about Ripple and its fate, if you don't mind. Or actually, it's what happened with it while we had it. Firstly, it was the case, was it not, that the state was earning income from its residual 49% interest prior to sale?
It got some returns from the Westconnex entities prior to the sale of the 49%, correct?
Yeah, and that, that sale constituted, sorry, those returns constituted both for one of the terms, well, included dividends, did it not?
Principally capital, Mr. Mooki.
Yeah, but also dividends, yes.
I'm not certain that, because the Westconnex business was not, was not planned to be profitable for quite some period of time. I, I'll have to take it on notice the mix, but it may well have only been capital.
Okay. And just on that though, we certainly, Ripple was being paid its share of sort of, well, what it was entitled to under the contract and the concession date, was it not?
It's getting, that's correct, yes.
Yeah, and whether or not you characterize that a profit or not is, I guess, a separate question, but it was earning income from the Westconnex, was it not?
It did have some returns from Westconnex, and my recollection is the majority of that being capital.
Okay, sure. And that's not reflected in the dividends line item of the budget. That's dividend, that's reflected in the other distributions and returns, is it not?
I'd have to confirm that, but definitely not in the dividends because of the nature of the return being capital.
Yeah, and so it's other dividends and distributions, which is, I guess, is consistent with electricity company companies as well. Like, it's not a different policy, is it?
No, but the characterization of, of distribution of earnings versus capital may well turn up in different parts of the.
Budget, fair enough. If on notice, can you clarify where precisely the capital returns from Ripple would have turned up?
I can, I might check with Miss Wilkinson to see if she is aware of that, but otherwise we'll take it on notice.
Yeah, if Miss Wilkinson knows, that would be helpful. Thank you. How much in capital returns did we get last year?
I do not have that information. I might check with Miss Krist if she has that information.
No, sorry, we'll have to take that on notice.
Was it in the last year above $600 million?
Sorry, I have to, yeah, sorry, Jackie.
Take that on notice.
Was it specifically around 622 million?
We'd have to take it on notice, I think.
So I'm just getting these figures from the annual reports, like, in terms of what was reported in the annual reports that were tabled in Parliament just a couple of weeks ago. And it showed that Ripple had distributed circa at least $500 million back last year. Is that the range we're talking about? That's what's?
Look, in terms of order of magnitude, Mr. Mooki, that could, could well have been the case. The returns of capital, you know, were in the hundreds of millions of dollars, so that could easily be a, a, a valid scenario, yes.
And to be fair, is it not the case that returns from Ripple have to be, by law, deposited in the New South Wales Generations Fund?
That's correct.
And so the, the New South Wales Generations Fund also reported a sort of a contribution from the government of about, or actually from Ripple. Or at least you can infer it being at least consistent with that figure. And so we can assume it was at least above 500 million, at least, unless you can tell us differently. I'm going to proceed on that basis.
Let's proceed on that basis, yep.
Okay. Firstly, when you, the residual interest was sold, did we factor in what our expected earnings were off the residual 49%? I'm not asking you what they were, but was it a factor?
Yes.
And equally, did we factor in sort of, at what point, well, what dividends we were, not just capital returns?
Yes, absolutely.
And when were we expected to be earning dividends? From what period of time roughly? Don't get me specific, but what sort of five-year block and between now and 2060 were we meant to be starting to earn dividends off our residual interest?
I think that would fall into the same category of information Mr. Gardner was referring to earlier. It's commercially sensitive and won't be disclosed.
Okay. Well, what, what sort of return on, I presume it's going to be a similar answer, but what return on equity were we meant to be expecting over the life of our residual, of our, you know, the 49% for which we got through the sale process?
It's the same answer. It's commercially sensitive and won't be disclosed.
Okay, but you accept the principle that in selling the 49%, we, we were buy, were basically selling the value of our future earnings?
Yes, I accept that.
And we can infer the multiple that at least Transurban paid. Is that the same multiple that you were willing to accept of future earnings?
I don't think we can infer the multiple that Transurban paid, and the, our multiple is commercially sensitive.
So how then should we judge whether or not we got value for money by selling the 49%? I mean, if we can't do the other available metrics that a private company can use for asset disposal, or how then can you assure us as a Treasury that we got value for money?
Well, clearly Treasury undertook significant work around the valuation and determining what would be an appropriate market valuation for the asset. And we would not have recommended to government to proceed with the transaction if we didn't get a bid that was above that, or in line with that market value.
Look, I accept as given that Treasury would not have recommended a sale if Treasury thought it was a bad idea. But I guess the question is, is how are we going to scrutinize your judgment, given the size of the asset that we sold? I mean, how can a person who's paying a toll or not paying a toll figure out whether or not Treasury got us a good deal or a bad deal?
Well, I think Mr. Gardner has addressed these points earlier about the complexity of that question and the fact that the information is commercially sensitive.
But we got, we got a $500 million capital return last year, minimum. Probably, I'm putting it to you, it's about 622 million. Prior to that, I think it was about $91 million, and that was just really in the two years that we had it. And can you see, sort of, given that this was quite a lucrative asset, it was paying, the capital return we got from our 49% last year, I think it's double what Sydney Water Payers in a dividend. Like, by privatizing it, we have certainly lost what would have otherwise be recurring income. Is that at least fair?
So that capital return is obviously, capital returns happen on, you know, infrequent occasions, and the size of it has nothing to do with the profitability of the business. And so it's not an indication of, you know, future sort of revenue streams or distributions from that business. As I said, it wasn't expected to be profitable for some period of time, given the construction and sort of, you know, establishment costs of that business.
But, Mr. Gardner, in the absence of you being prepared to release any forecast as to what its income was, it's hard for us to sit here and sort of accept that evidence as given, because the only thing we can infer is that we were getting a lot of money out of Ripple until it was sold. And equally, given that Transurban and its consortium paid $11 billion for 49%, they clearly think that it's worth a lot of money, at least $11 billion its future earnings is worth. Surely you would agree with that, that Transurban put a high value, or the bidders or the buyers of our interest put a high value on the state's future earnings?
Well, they put a high value on it based on their sort of assessment, their capital structure, their operations costs. And that could be completely different to the, the sort of structure and the operational environment that it might be in, uh, uh, under government hands, and so.
But you're not prepared to tell us that, i.e. as to what it would be under government hands?
No, no, absolutely. That is one of the most sensitive pieces of information that we have in the process.
Right. But surely, the, the, I mean, my colleague was asking you about how much revenue we were, the toll payers will be forsaking until 2060. But I'm asking you, how much dividend income have we foregone as taxpayers that we could otherwise be using to build more roads or pay for hospitals and schools? Can you at least tell us how much foregone revenue taxpayers have lost between now and 2060? Well, not lost, how much revenue we have foregone by selling the state's residual interest in Westconnex?
I, you know, for the reasons we've talked about, can't put a specific number. What I can do is to take it on notice to determine, like, we will have mechanically changed sort of, you know, the budget. And so, you know, there may be some element of what are you actually sending the budget papers that I can take on notice to come back and give you a specific answer on that.
Thank you. My only last question is, is that any information you can provide us about how the budget has changed in the forward estimates? And equally, if we can get that data broken out over the next 10 years, because as I understand it, Treasury forecasted as a 10-year profile, that would be helpful too.
I will take that on notice.
Thank you. I'll pass back to my colleague.
Mr. Gardner, I might return to where the chair was heading when she asked you about the Western Harbour Tunnel. From a, from a transport point of view, if the government made a policy decision to keep traffic toll one way on the harbour tunnel and the harbour bridge, it might then make sense from a traffic management point of view to keep traffic on the tolls on the Western Harbour Tunnel only in one direction. Does Treasury have a view about how much that is likely to impact on a potential sale price?
Uh, no.
Would it be of concern to Treasury? You'd agree that it clearly would have some significant impact on the toll revenue?
Yeah, yeah, the difference between, I mean, it's sort of, well, you, you can conceivably take what you pay on a one-way toll and harbour it and put it on a two-way toll, and therefore the toll revenue doesn't change. So it's all about actually what's your setting, as opposed to, i- is it the methodology of one-way or two-way is not the determinant of the revenue. It's actually where you then set the tolls.
Yeah, it's a complex interaction, because you'd have to double the tolls on the harbour bridge and harbour tunnel from a traffic management point of view.
Well, conceptually, you, you could harbour it, right? And put it on two-way with, with net zero impact on, well, you know. And put it on two-way with net zero impact on, well, you know, apart from doing the minutia of the, of the analysis, you've got a lot of different options.
Yeah. So, but, but is it safe to say, Transport's job will be to look at that as traffic management issues, but from a Treasury point of view, you would, you're the guardian of the revenue to the state. You will express a view, what that is, I'm not actually asking you, but you, you will be expected to express a Treasury view about whether this tolling ends up one way or two ways on a Western Harbour Tunnel. That's a fair conclusion, isn't it?
Look, our interest in it is probably just more understanding the impact on the financials. You know, we'll have, I mean, we'll.
That's the bottom line.
That is the bottom line, that's right. So Transport, you know, the network operational sort of efficiency aspects of it are definitely in Transport's domain to advise the government on.
Yeah. Well, I now want to return to my colleague.
Sorry, John, sorry, Mr. Grant, sorry. If I could just butt in there and then I'll, I'll allow you to carry on. Just on that point, I understand that whether or not we have the two-way tolling or whether or not we have some sort of reform that considers the various crossings in order to, I guess, avoid those kind of traffic network distortions is a, is a matter primarily for Transport. But presumably Treasury is particularly interested when it comes to the future prospect of selling the Western Harbour Tunnel in what that toll reform looks like, correct? Mr. Gardner?
I, I wouldn't characterize it this particularly. That's a, a very, like, I think if you were to, if the government were to give consideration to running a process around that, then yes, we would have some consideration as, you know, to, to back to Mr. Graham's question, you know, we will be interested in the overall level of tolling as it impacts on revenue to the state. And, you know, very conceptually, any future monetization. So we would certainly have a, have a determination as to whether or not there was something put into the advice to government from Treasury around that. But it's at this stage, it's a very hypothetical situation because we, we're undertaking Western Harbour Tunnel under a DNC arrangement. It doesn't open until twenty-twenty-eight. You know, there's a lot of water to flow under a bridge or a lot of roads to go over a bridge. But, you know, it's, it's very preliminary and hypothetical to be thinking about that.
So I'm looking at this document that we obtained under the call for papers dated twenty-one November two thousand and nineteen. And this is a Treasury document and it contains meeting notes with Transurban regarding the Western Harbour Tunnel and the Beaches Link and has representatives from both Treasury and Transport on the panel attending. This meeting involved a discussion about various models for ownership and/or construction of the Western Harbour Tunnel and Beaches Link. And in it, there is a note from the panel, and it is explicitly stated that this is the panel being the representatives from Transport and Treasury that says, quote, "Working on a tolling framework that considers toll reform across crossings, equalized tolls likely to avoid traffic network distortions," end quote. And then Transurban proposes a model where they may procure and deliver the Western Harbour Tunnel asset, including tolling systems, and then hand it back to the state on the basis that that would allow the state to retain the existing tolling and delay toll reform. Now, clearly from reading that, it's clear that Treasury has quite a, a big interest in what happens with the tolling across those roads in order to work out what may or may not be the best method for financing the Western Harbour Tunnel and Beaches Link. Is the review that you're doing into tolling connected to this toll reform that was being discussed with Treasury and Transport?
No. And look, that, that, I'm not that familiar with that particular document, but it certainly precedes actual decisions governments made around how to proceed with the procurement for Western Harbour Tunnel, which is, you know, a design and construct model where, you know, the state will, you know, cover the cost of the construction of that. So that's, you know, it, it sounds like different ideas were being bandied about, but the government has ultimately made a decision to go down a path of a design and construct on that project. So it gives the government a lot more sort of optionality and flexibility around timing of making decisions on, on sort of the tolling environment and the harbour crossings.
Did the government decide to go that way because the inconsistency or the, the issues or obstacles created by the different tolling across the various harbour crossings presented an obstacle to selling?
Look, when we, there's a, there's a huge number of considerations that come into play when you're considering an individual procurement. So it could have been anything from not being comfortable that we could get the right price in different options or inability to transfer risk or, you know, certain sort of construction objectives. So there could be anyone, I can't give a definitive answer that that's the case. It may have been one of many considerations that, that were sort of thought through. But, yeah, without being a hundred percent familiar with the decision around the particular procurement process for that project, I can't give you a definitive answer.
Thank you. Back to you, Mr. Graham.
Thank you, Chair. Mr. Gardner, I'm just going to pick up from where Mr. Mooki left off, where he was essentially inviting you to defend these deals, either the Westconnex sale or the, indeed these tolling concessions, and just encourage you to take that up. I mean, I would like Treasury, you've been invited to make a further submission as the government. I would like Treasury to be more upfront about the cost to drivers. That's clear. I just think the government should be upfront, Treasury should be upfront about the fact that they're paying more than a hundred billion dollars in tolls under contracts we've already signed, let alone the ones you'll encourage the government to sign here. My colleague's asking about the public revenue and asking you to put some things on the record about that. If Treasury won't defend these deals, you can't ask this committee to defend them. The Parliament's got a role to weigh this up. As an opposition, we're trying to make some policy decisions, acknowledging the benefits and the costs of these significant pieces of infrastructure. But we need you to be, to do your job and inform the Parliament about the costs. That hasn't happened to date at all in the government's submission. So really, I'm inviting you to take up my colleague's invitation and defend this deal and be clear about the benefits, but also about the costs in the further submission. Are you, I'll, I'll simply give you the chance to respond to that invitation now.
Look, we, I've obviously seen the letter that you have sent, Mr. Graham, and so we'll, you know, work with our colleagues in Transport and advise the government on, you know, sort of pertinent matters and get up to the, you know, for the government to determine, you know, how it responds.
Well, I, I would hope it's not just up to the ministers what the ends up being in the government's submission to the inquiry. I would hope that the views that Treasury, Treasury puts in are then not subject to some sort of ministerial office censorship. I won't invite you to respond to that. I think that'd be unfair, but I will put on the record my concerns if that was to be the case. One of the, I want to turn to that, those questions about the ACCC, because they did have some quite interesting views, I thought about, future toll road improvements and ensuring contestability when that, when that happens. Because that is likely to be the future of many of these discussions with government down the track. A toll road which has been running free but risks now congestion could be improved to the benefit of taxpayers and a company who sought to run it. Did you have any response on that question that the ACCC put in front of the committee about ensuring that those are contestable decisions, that there's, we're getting multiple bids for those future improvements to the toll network within the existing concessions?
Yeah. So certainly when we think about sort of, you know, the different options in front of the government around, you know, sort of building a particular project versus having it constructed and financed by the private sector, we have to give consideration to what's the competitive environment we can bring to the table. And, you know, obviously things like, you know, big cost compensation or ensuring that there's a level playing field in terms of data or genuinely understanding sort of how the risk transfer from the state may sort of, you know, level the playing field around those things. So certainly all things that we would have to take into account. One of the interesting prospects was that they noted was excluding particular parties from a process. Very interesting proposition that may well not lead to the best possible outcome for the taxpayers and the people in New South Wales. And so definitely want to give very, we definitely want to give very, very strong consideration to the pros and cons of doing that. But certainly noted that as something they, they put in there, like we have been, as Jackie said, very confident that in the process that we've run to date, you know, we have achieved very good outcomes for the state from a value for money perspective, from an operational perspective, from a risk transfer perspective. So I stand behind the decisions that have been made, but any future decision will be have to weigh up with all these different sort of, you know, competition matters in mind. And as we talked about, Western Harbour Tunnel M6 proceeding with a DNC construct for, you know, reasons specific to the projects and, and potentially competition reasons as well.
And on that, on that specific question about the data, because that was the key area where the ACCC intervened, but there have been some calls and I think, I recall they said, well, they, in fact, they did say in their submission, the state could go further in requesting that some of that data was available to the public and potentially to competitors. Does Treasury have a view on that question? Because there, there obviously is a real concentration of knowledge and data with a single operator here.
Yeah, I think my recollection is the premise of the question is give more time and more data to the proponents in the process. And we'll absolutely take that on in considering any future project. I mean, we did bolster the traffic analysis work we did in the forty-nine percent, you know, with this particular issue in mind.
Yeah. Could we go further though? You're right about the give more time and more data. I'm just asking about the data. Could we go further? Do, do, do you have hopes down the track? This will still be important down the track?
It will, it will continue to be important down the track. I think, you know, there obviously will be limits as to what information we actually can get and available. And we do think incredibly deeply around, you know, all the information that is required. So I'm not confident we can go further, but we would make every possible effort to increase the transparency and the amount of data that's available. I mean, there's a point at which, you know, additional data will help, what we can.
Yeah. I, I agree with that, although that wasn't in, in the end of view the ACCC put, which is why I'm, I'm asking. But yeah, thank you for that answer. The, I want to ask about the Sydney Harbour Bridge toll. This toll's never gone up in the life of this government. Tolls in Western Sydney going up four percent a year under a deal you recommended that the government signed. The Sydney Harbour Bridge toll is reviewed annually. It's got to take account of the fact that prices are going up every year. It sits in front of the minister with a recommendation from Transport every year. And every year, there's been no increase. From a Treasury point of view, as you've recommended, prices governing Western Sydney four percent a year, are you concerned that this toll price has been given some exemption that there's been no public defense of?
Look, I don't have a specific view. The one thing I would note is that, you know, the harbour crossings are a monopoly asset. You don't have alternatives from a road perspective, but look, I don't have an opinion. I mean, that's sort of, I, I don't have a view on that particular question.
Well, why doesn't Treasury have a view, Mr. Gardner? This must be the only giveaway, fiscal giveaway that Treasury doesn't have a view. Isn't, why is it in the public interest that Treasury, the government makes whatever decision it makes, but I would have hoped Treasury would be in there arguing for public revenue, for taxpayers' revenue. But you're saying Treasury hasn't had a view at all?
Look, it, it, the Transport, I mean, we, we sort of defer to Transport to formulate advice to the government. You know, Treasury does provide insights that will then sort of, you know, advise the Treasurer and ERC around our particular perspectives on this. But, you know, the, the traffic management aspects of this, there are operational complexities. So, you know, and, and again, I don't, you know, I'm, I don't think that, you know, Treasury has put forward a particular opinion on this matter.
But what about the, forget the traffic management, what about the fiscal giveaway year on year as ministers sign off on this? Why hasn't Treasury expressed a view about that? Why don't you have a view about that?
I don't know. I'll check in with Miss Wilkinson to see if she's got a particular response on that.
I would just say that our opinions are not within the terms of reference. Obviously, we give advice and decision to support to government, but our opinions are not something that we can discuss today.
What advice has been given as millions of dollars have been foregone on the Harbour Bridge while drivers in Western Sydney have their tolls put up four percent every year?
I think you're aware, Mr. Graham, that our advice to Cabinet is confidential, but we're happy to take these questions on notice and consult with our General Counsel as to what we can share.
This is not a cabinet process. Does Treasury, has Treasury provided any advice outside the cabinet process about this fiscal giveaway? As ministers have kept harbour bridge tolls stable, but put up Western Sydney tolls four percent a year?
As I've said, I'll see if there's advice we've given outside of that confidentiality and we'll take it on notice.
Thank you. I might at that point hand to my colleague.
Thank you. I might just follow up on that. Has Treasury prepared any modeling on toll options for the Harbour Bridge?
I think that would fall into that sort of category of, I mean, we've thought about it. And it would probably be having to be considered in the current review that we're undertaking. Because, you know, we obviously need to give advice on the Sydney Harbour Tunnel. And it's a question of, you know, what are the government's options around that? And what is the impact if the Harvard Bridge and the Harbour Tunnel were different? And so we have to give consideration to that for that very reason.
So the answer to this is yes, you are preparing modeling on options when it comes to Harbour Bridge.
What we're giving, we, we've, we've obviously got to provide the government with options on the Harbour Tunnel tolling. And therefore it needs to take into account the settings of the Harbour Bridge. It's not to say that we'll necessarily provide any advice on changing the Harbour Bridge, but we need to, we need to undertake the review on the basis that there will be impacts from a traffic management perspective if we were to have differential tolling between the bridge and the tunnel.
Indeed. And you said earlier that the tunnel concession reverts back to the, to Transport, I think, in August this year?
That's correct.
What happens the day after it reverts back?
I do not know. You should ask Transport from New South Wales that question.
But surely from a revenue perspective, like Treasury would have to have an idea as to what it expects to happen on the Harbour Tunnel, doesn't it?
That is, that is correct. I think you'll see in the tolling forecast, in the budget, the tolling does step up. And so I would imagine that that would reflect the reversion of the tolls to the state's coffers.
Okay. So we are at least forecasting for budget purposes that the toll will be paid to the tax or to the Treasury and into consolidated revenue after.
Look, unless Miss Wilkinson can categorically confirm that, otherwise I would take it on notice.
I'm just not confirmed the budget papers really, like the budget papers currently are based on the assumption that the tolls will come into the public domain, barring any further future policy decision by the government.
I think my senior colleague has agreed to take it on notice, so that's what we'll do.
Sure, but it's a separate question now. It's, the budget forecasts reflect the fact that, that we will be retaining that revenue barring any, it's assuming. it's assuming, the current forecasts have as the assumption that the toll continues unless there's any further government decision that.
Yeah, look, I'll have, yeah, look, I'm not intimately familiar with the mechanism that determines that, Mr Mooki, so I will unfortunately have to take it on notice.
Okay, just, Mr Gardner, I, we explored this before and I have a suspicion that I'm going to have as much success as I did before. But when we were talking about the actual bid process for the sale, we, I was asking you whether or not the state actually received more than one bid. Not more than one registered bidder, but whether we got more than one bid. Are you any, at the time, the then Treasury Secretary said on notice that they would provide us far more information about how many people actually did bid. And I got, we got the answers on notice from budget estimates and sadly, we weren't told, which is a bit disappointing. Can you at least tell us now that the sale process is well and truly done? Like, did we at least get more than one bidder for our interest?
Look, I think your premise is right, Mr Mooki. I'm not going to divulge more than I've done previously on this matter. You know, I guess there's a couple of things, again, it's similar to the response on the revenue. One is that information is provided to Cabinet as an important part of its decision-making process, whether or not to award the mandate, so that's that aspect of it. The second part of it is, that is a very sort of commercially sensitive piece of information. Again, both to us if we were to run future concessions, but also to the private sector, you know, in other jurisdictions. These are very large-scale assets. There's a very finite field that people are willing to participate in. So it is a very strategic, now that piece of information is of very strategic importance. And so we wouldn't disclose it.
As to not asking what the bids were, but you're telling me whether or not we got more than one bidder in an auction is, has to remain a state secret indefinitely?
Well, I, again, I'll take the indefinitely sort of under advice, I'll, I'll sort of determine what that is. But, you know, this isn't a principle that is specific to asset recycling or monetisations or leases. It's something that's consistent across, you know, all our procurement activities, PPPs, you know, just procurement.
It's not consistent, Mr Gardner. This is part of the issue. The base case financial models have been published in the past. It might be consistent now, but that's because there is a veil of secrecy that's been pulled over these deals.
I'm, I'm talking about the participants, the field of participants in the stages of the, of the sale of the forty nine percent of Westconnex. And so.
I'm not really asking you to identify the participants. I'm really not. All I'm asking you to identify is if there was more than one. Like, which, and let's be honest, when it comes to sort of auction processes, both public and private, like if there's, this is not, actually, that is not a fiercely held state secret. What they paid for, what they were prepared to pay for, I can probably accept that there's at least a logic to your position. But I'm at least, all I'm asking for is confirmation that we at least had more than one bid on the table when it came to this asset.
And, and Mr Mooki, I'm going to revert to my prior response. That's part of the Cabinet's sort of advice that we gave to government to make a decision to assist them in making a decision whether to proceed. And it's very sensitive to us and to other participants in this very narrow market.
Well, what about the scoping study? Are we going to see the scoping study? Is that in a position where we can at least provide, get further information as to what the scoping study said? Who the bids, is that going to be publicly released or is that now also a secret for another thirty years?
So the scoping study was again, part of the materials that went into Cabinet to enable them to make a decision to proceed with the transaction. So the cabinet confidentiality and of that is obviously paramount.
Mr Mooki, yeah, I just wanted to chime in on that. So it's, the document I was reading to you from before, Mr Gardner, makes it clear that there were no other parties involved in the, the sale of Westconnex. Transurban in that document is recorded as arguing that the state can still get value for money with non-competitive processes. They said other parties withdrew from Westconnex not because Transurban was involved, but because they couldn't arrange the capital. That clearly implies that there was no other valid bids for Westconnex.
I'm not at all familiar with that document and the timing of that may be entirely inconsistent with the transaction process.
Miss Boyd, could you clarify what the document is that you're reading from? Was it the one you were referring to earlier?
Correct.
Yeah, that was mine. I haven't seen that document, but from what you're saying, my understanding is that is a record of a meeting that was undertaken with Transurban through a course of consultant, consulting with the market about the Western Harbour Tunnel project. So it was completely separate from the Westconnex transactions. We had the similar meetings with other market participants around what may occur in the Western Harbour Tunnel if we were to try and do some kind of private financing. And as Mr Gardner has said, the decisions now have been made by government that the, that is being pursued.
To clarify, the document, the document I was reading from was in relation to a market standing in relation to the Western Harbour Tunnel. But in it, there are a number of statements unrelated. And one of them is in relation to whether or not there needs to be more than one bid should the Western Harbour Tunnel proceed to, to sale. And in that context, Transurban is recorded as arguing that the reason that, quote, "other parties withdrew from Westconnex", quote, was not because Transurban was involved, but because they couldn't arrange the capital. I guess what I'm saying is doesn't that very clearly imply that there were no other bids that made it to the point of actually being up for?
I think the date of that document, if it's the one I'm thinking of, occurred before the Westconnex forty nine percent sale. So it's probably referring to the fifty one percent sale.
Okay, perhaps if you could take that on notice, that would be very useful. I think we've only got one minute. Mr Mooki, were you finished with your?
I think Mr Graham has the last question.
Over to you, Mr Graham.
Can I, thank you, Chair. So, Mr Gardner, can I, I don't want to misquote you, so can I just, I, I think this is your position. You can't tell us the number of bids, number of bidders on the Westconnex. So you can't show us the scoping study. You believe the base case financial model should be kept a secret till twenty sixty, even though they've been released to Parliament in the past. And you've taken, you might want to keep it a secret after twenty sixty.
Characterisation.
Good. I'll give you the opportunity to respond. As a result, we don't know how much in compensation might be owed. We know the framework, but without that base case financial model, we don't know the compensation. You can't tell us the public revenue that was flowing under these deals of the timeframe. And you certainly won't tell us how much drivers are on the hook in total, in totals, under the life of contracts you recommended and the government signed, even though it's more than a hundred billion dollars. Is that a fair characterisation or would you like to correct the record on any of those matters?
Certainly on the matter of the twenty sixty versus the sort of disclosure environment for Cabinet documents, I'll need to sort of take advice on, on that one. And sort of, you know, the rest of it, I think, is reasonable characterization, characterization of responses across a number of questions for the reasons I set out very clearly around cabinet confidentiality, commercial confidentiality and uncertainty of, of the numbers themselves.
Thank you.
Thank you. We are just about out of time, but I will just check in with Mr Farlow that there are no additional questions from the government.
Nothing from us, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you very much to our witnesses for attending. That does bring us to the end of this particular session for today. To the extent that any questions were taken on notice, and I believe there were a few, the committee secretary will be in touch in relation to providing answers to those within twenty one days. We are going to take a break until twelve forty five PM, at which time we'll be back with representatives from Transport for New South Wales. Thank you. Okay. Well, how about we start? And if there's a question that was better directed to Miss Burke O'Neill, we can redirect it to her when she joins.
Okay, that sounds like a good plan.
Okay. It's all yours, Mr Mooki.
Did you want to invite the witnesses to make an opening statement, Chair, if that's how wished?
That's a very good point. Thank you, Mr Mooki. Do either of you have an opening statement that you'd like to make at this time?
Yes, I'd like to make a short opening statement and good afternoon. And I acknowledge the committee's invitation to appear as a witness today and appreciate the opportunity to outline Transport for New South Wales' position on road tolling and regimes in New South Wales. So as I mentioned before, I'm Yost Cokk and my position is the Deputy Secretary, Customer Strategy and Technology. And related to tolling, my area of accountability is the customer and toll collection operations and related matters. I'm joined by Camilla Drover, DEPC, Infrastructure Place, who has accountability for motorway design, delivery, commissioning and new tolling concessions. And Megan and Meg Burke O'Neill, DEPC Greater Sydney, who has accountability for the network operations. So in two thousand and eighteen nineteen, a legislative council portfolio committee inquiry was undertaken into road tolling with very similar terms of reference. And Transport provided a submission and appeared at the witnesses before the committee. And New South Wales Government responded to the inquiry in two thousand and eighteen. The Transport for New South Wales submission for this current inquiry reflects the significant progress made with the expansion of Sydney's motorway network, the resulting travel time savings delivered for motorists and additional cost of living relief measures offered by the New South Wales Government. The New South Wales Government's one hundred and eight point five billion infrastructure programme is one of the largest on the world and includes seventy one point five billion of investment into roads and public transport projects being delivered as planned to make the transport network faster, safer and more convenient. And this multi-generational investment has been fundamental to supporting jobs and growth during one of the most challenging periods in the state's history through the COVID nineteen pandemic. The state's motorway construction programme funded significantly for tolling is an intrinsic part of our future transport framework. And the government's user-paced toll road, toll road programme is a crucial element to the infrastructure programme as it brings forward the state's ability to create an extensive and much-needed motorway network while maintaining its fiscal integrity. As a result, motorists experience the benefit of faster, less congested and safer journeys years and even decades sooner than would be possible if the state was to publicly fund the roads. The Sydney's motorway construction programme will result in thousands of cars and trucks being removed daily from local roads, returning these roads to local communities for local use and improving safety and livability. Motorways also facilitate the use of public transport, either directly by bus or by freeing up capacity for public transport on local roads or by connecting people more easily and efficiently to transport hubs. In October two thousand and fourteen, the government approved a set of principles for tolling Sydney's motorways to be used to guide the future tolling decisions on Sydney's motorway network. These remain the same today. And the government has well-established principles and practices for setting tolls that protect the public interest based on objective evidence, expert analysis and advice from agencies such as Transport for New South Wales, New South Wales Treasury and also Infrastructure New South Wales. There has been recent media concerning the toll reform, like creating distance-based and capped levies and existing tolls. No decisions have been made on the future tolling strategy. The toll and escalation rates are set to reflect the cost of finance, design, build and operate and maintain the motorways of the life of the concession agreement between the toll road operator and governments. The New South Wales Government cannot force companies to freeze or reduce tolls without agreement and compensation. And as part of the commitment for continual improvements, the New South Wales Government, led by New South Wales Treasury and supported by Transport for New South Wales, is currently reviewing the current New South Wales tolling regime. And the New South Wales Government is really committed to creating and maintaining the best road network and best public transport system for the people of New South Wales. Any of the outcomes of the review will be considered by the New South Wales Government. A range of measures are offered by the New South Wales Government to ease the cost of living pressures, including the Sydney motorway users. A toll relief scheme is one of the seventy rebates or discounts offered by the New South Wales Government to reduce the cost of living. The separate cashback scheme also remains in place for motorists using the M five Southwest. Just a few closing points, tolls that help pay for the road infrastructure delivered and bring forward the state's ability to create an extensive and much-needed motorway network while maintaining its fiscal integrity. Motorists experience the benefits of faster and safer journeys years or even decades sooner than would be possible if the state were to publicly fund the roads. The user-paced principle ensures that those who benefit from the motorways contribute a significant portion of the cost of building and maintaining the motorway network. We are well advanced into delivering towards a future transport twenty fifth vision, providing new public transport modes, services, interchanges, building better and smarter roads and finally completing the missing link in our comprehensive motorway network. Tolls help pay for the road infrastructure delivered. Without them, the roads Sydney needs would not be built. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much, Mr Cokk. And I note that Miss Megan Burke O'Neill has arrived as well. Could I just firstly check that your video and sound is working?
Yes, thank you. I believe my video is working and I hope you can hear me. And I apologize to the committee for that connection difficulty that I just had.
No problem at all. It happens to all of us, far too regularly, unfortunately. Thank you. If I could just get you to state your name and position title and then swear either the oath or affirmation?
Yes, Megan or Meg Burke O'Neill, Deputy Secretary, Greater Sydney for Transport for New South Wales. I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Thank you very much. I'm just checking that you don't need time to do an opening statement or that's all been captured already. There's nothing you need to add?
No, it has by my colleague, Mr Decock. Thank you.
Fantastic. All right. Thank you very much. So over to the opposition for questioning. Is that you, Mr Mooki? No, Mr Graham, off you go. We can't hear you. There's always one. No, we still can't hear you. There we go. I can hear you now. Thank you.
Right, yeah. And thank you to the transport officials for appearing and those opening statements. I might start by asking about that question we asked the Treasury officials who were very keen to refer this straight to Transport. And that was about the option of having decision point signage as you approached toll roads in Sydney. So in Melbourne at the moment, those trials are ongoing. They include travel times. What they don't include is the idea of also having not just the live travel time saving, but also potentially the price of toll roads. What's the cost to drive down this toll road? It's been supported by drivers, supported certainly by the opposition. Transurban seems to say they can do it. Is this something Transport can get behind as well and see put in place to the benefit of drivers?
I think I might start with that question and thank you for that question. And we have seen that Transurban suggested those, that, that decision point signage. And I think we're always open to new ideas for innovation and happy to consider that. Also, when we look at new ideas for any piece of innovation, we prioritize that and we'll need to take into consideration many elements such as, you know, its value for the customers, any safety aspects, how it can be implemented, where it will be most appropriate. We'll be very interested to learn about the experience in the Victorian pilot. So I'd say we're always open for new innovative ideas. And I might just pass over to my colleague Burke O'Neill to talk maybe a little bit about some of the operational aspects of that concept.
Sure. Thank you, Mr Decock. So yes, I'd just reiterate what my colleague has said, that as a concept, we would consider it. We haven't received it formally at this stage. I understand it's been part of Transurban's submission to this inquiry. Just a couple of additional comments, because I think Yost has really pointed to, we would, we'd need to fully assess and consider it. Displaying sort of decision-based signage and information for customers isn't an entirely new concept for Transport for New South Wales. We already provide some near-time travel time information to key destinations on displays. Around a hundred and thirty electronic variable messaging signs that are on the infrastructure around Greater Sydney, around the metropolitan area. And these signs are located on sort of key arterial roads, as well as some of the state-owned roads and some of the private operators' tollways as well. And that real-time information is presented to customers. As well as we do display, tollway operators do display at times pricing when they make price changes. That's typically displayed on their signage for a week before the price change and also for a week after. So there's some implementation of real-time information to customers already. And yes, this is a concept we're aware of, but we would need to see a proposal put to government for that to be assessed and for government to take a decision on.
Yeah, I think that's fair to say. It is more and more common to have that travel time information available, which is incredibly useful. What's not there routinely and certainly not across most of the toll roads in Sydney is that cost. So people can really weigh up the benefits of the travel time savings and the cost as they make that. Uh, so people can really weigh up the benefits of the travel time savings and the cost as they make that decision. So there's certainly no in principle objection from Transport. It's consistent with the direction you'd like to head.
Uh, there's no in principle objection at this stage. We would just need to see the proposal and understand the impacts, the limitations, also compliance with some of our requirements around signage, line marking and a road safety lens. So it's too soon to say and we haven't seen the detail of the proposal. But I'm just reiterating that for us, providing real time information to customers for their journey is something that we're already doing quite a lot of work in.
Yeah, and it already happens in many, many places across the network. So again, in principle, there should be no reason some of those logistical hurdles that you would have to really look at closely would be unable to be overcome.
Yeah, well, we, we would take the proposal, consider the impacts and then that would be a decision for government to take on an initiative like that. And I note that it's come from Transurban, one of our private operators. So we need to consider also network wide applications. So we'll wait to see the detail of the proposal if that's submitted to government.
Yeah, in terms of, in terms of the reception it's received in Victoria, this is the feedback from the research. Almost seventy percent of people said they'd use the signs to inform future travel choices. And about forty percent said the signs helped inform their travel choice on the spot. So it's a tick from drivers. Um, the tolling operator says they could do it. Um, and it's certainly no objection from Transport as this proposal's considered in some detail. Is that fair?
Yes, that's fair to say we would consider it if it's submitted, yes.
Yep, no, thank you for that. Thank you for those responses. I might just ask if there's any other background you'd like to give on that, on that proposal at all? Anything else that's useful to consider?
Um, I don't have any other comments, but I'll just check back in with my colleagues to see if they want to add anything further.
No, nothing further to add.
Now, the government seems to have dismissed this call today. Um, the Deputy Premier, I think, particularly being critical. Um, but that is, I gather, not based on advice from Transport to date. He wouldn't have received formal advice from Transport at this point.
I'm not aware of the comments you're referring to, but I would say that we haven't received the proposal. So that's why I sort of can't comment and we haven't provided advice.
Yep, thank you for that. Um, I might turn to the question of the review that you've just run through in some detail and thank you for that. I might also ask that the Treasury team have offered to provide the terms of reference for the review on notice. So I might extend that invitation to the Transport team as well. Um, one thing that wasn't totally clear in the Treasury session was exactly what the timing is here. When will this report? What's the deadline you've been given?
So thank you for that question. I might start the response. Um, so I think, as I mentioned before in my opening speech, there is a government review being started. It's led by Treasury and supported by Transport for New South Wales. And so as Treasury colleagues mentioned earlier, it had started in early, in early, in January and we're still sort of in the planning phases. Uh, so it's, yes, it's still early days in that piece of work.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that answer and you've given some of that detail about the start. I'm interested in what the end date is. Is there a deadline for this work? Normally that would be standard part of the terms of reference. When is this required to report?
Um, and consistent with some of the answers that my colleagues from Treasury made. So this is a piece of work that will be conducted during the course of this year with options going to governments starting quarter three and four from this year. And, and maybe some of it will be more short term versus some of the longer term measures. Uh, so yes, it's during the course of this year that we'll be looking for putting some options forward to governments.
Yeah, and so just to give a sense to drivers about how much they might expect some early answers in this area, which has clearly caused some community concern. Those first answers, those short term answers, we'd expect the first of those in maybe quarter three of this year.
So I think, yeah, so we're looking forward to doing that review. So we're still in the early planning stages. Um, if there's some pieces of work that we can do faster, we'll do so. But the plan is that this work will conclude towards the end of this year, so quarter three, quarter four.
Right, but you're not ruling out that you might recommend measures earlier than quarter three this year? Is that correct?
Yeah, as I mentioned before, we're still planning. So there may be some earlier decisions that we could, could make or rather decisions for some options we can put forward. Uh, but we're not ruling that out at the moment. So as we're still in the early planning stages.
And one of the reasons you may need to be somewhat of a hurry is because of that tolling arrangements on the Sydney Harbour Tunnel, that August deadline. Um, how much is that going to drive along the speed of this? Will you have answers on that part of the puzzle before August?
Um, so as you're aware, the concession of the Sydney Harbour Tunnel ends the end of, end of August. So we're aware of that timeframe and that's fact will be factored into the, the project planning for this review. Uh, so we'll need to do some work ahead of that particular date.
I'm just going to indicate, Chair, that I might hand to my colleague at this point because we're having some more construction issues right next door. So I'm gonna, I know he's got an interest in this area. I'm gonna hand him now and see what I can manage at this end.
Thank you. I think that construction knows it's taking a toll. Um, but can I just pick up on some of the questioning before? You were making the point around the review. Uh, just to be clear, did you hear Treasury describe what they considered to be in scope of that review?
Uh, yes, I was listening to Mr. Gardner's responses, yes.
So can you also confirm that that is your understanding as to what's in scope?
So in terms of in scope, again, it's looking at the, the assessment of the current tolling arrangements, including rebates and relief and also looking at the broader tolling arrangements. Uh, we're looking at a full range of options and, and as I mentioned before, the plan is to provide options to governments in quarter three, quarter four from this year.
My colleague put a very specific list of items which may or may not be considered. And I think we're talking caps, we were talking cashback, we were talking about inflation escalator. That is, in your understanding, is all in scope?
Yeah, we haven't actually specifically excluded those for scope. Uh, yes, so they're in principle in scope.
And equally, it is also your understanding around the heavy vehicle industry and they'd have the opportunity to have their issues considered as part of this review? Or is that not in scope?
Uh, in principle, I think that's also in scope, uh, to consider the heavy vehicle and considerations as well, yes.
Okay, I think my colleague might be in a position to recover now if not.
Yeah, thank you, uh, thank you for that. Um, I might just ask some questions about some of those specifics. One of those is the current registration relief scheme that's currently in place for the government. Um, just give us an idea about how, how that's regarded at the moment by Transport as one of the easy measures to reform. Is that at the easier end of this spectrum or not?
So could you repeat the questions? There are a lot of background noise.
I might be in a, I might be in a position to assist. I think my colleague was asking you about the registration relief and whether or not that is of course in scope. And can you take us through whether that's something which can be done easily or not?
So I, I confirm that the review is quite broad in its scope and we'll look at relief measures as well. And as you're aware, there is a tolling relief scheme operating right now that provides relief for, to, for tolling costs for people who are very heavy use of their, of the toll roads. But yes, that's absolutely in scope and we will look at that.
Well, can we just have a conversation about its present effectiveness? When was the last time Transport reviewed its effectiveness?
So as I say, maybe give you some, some ideas about the relief that is provided through the toll relief. And so it's a scheme that's introduced in two thousand and eighteen and it really is designed to provide relief for people that use the toll.
Sorry to interrupt, but I understand what the scheme is and its history. Uh, but I was actually asking you a very specific question. When was the last time Transport reviewed it?
So in terms, I've got some of the figures about some of the relief that drivers have received as part of that scheme.
We will get to, but the question was specific. When was the last time Transport reviewed it?
Uh, I will have to take that on notice.
Does Mr. Driver or Miss Burke O'Neill know the last time this scheme was reviewed? Has it been reviewed before?
I'm not aware. I can't add to that answer, Mr. Mooki.
Okay.
One of the useful distinctions that Treasury had was between some of the measures here that might be able to be implemented, which wouldn't trigger compensation under the contracts that are really wholly within the scope of the government and some that would. Can you just give us Transport's perspective on that? Can you talk us through how you think about the various buckets of potential solutions here when it comes to tolling relief?
Yeah, so in terms of, in terms of the review, there are definitely different areas such as relief and cashback schemes. Um, because those types of schemes don't require the renegotiation of concession arrangements. Any, any changes to concession arrangements is obviously a much more complicated matter. So there's definitely some shorter term things that can be done versus some longer term things which are much more, much more complex. So there are, there is a range of, of items in scope. Let's say somehow easier to, to implement and, and analyze first. And then there's some areas that are probably more longer term, more complex to implement and negotiate.
And just take us through what do you, what in the mind of Transport is in that short term category? What are some of the levers here? What are some of the things that are able to be considered that you think about as short term measures that might be possible?
Yeah, thank you for that question. As I said, we're still sort of doing the, the planning work for, for this initiative. But some of the shorter term things would be like some of the relief and the cashbacks, for example, are probably some of the things that are more on the shorter term list than the longer term list. And maybe I'll just maybe pass over to Miss Drover. Maybe talk a little bit about some of the work in, in that review, looking at some of the longer term initiatives.
Yeah, look, I think, I think it's fair to say in line with what Treasury said this morning, the review was only instigated earlier this year, just last month. So we are still in the planning, skyping stage. Uh, all the consultants, et cetera, haven't been confirmed. So it's probably too early to comment on what that review will actually find. But it is a board.
And following up on those discussions about industry consultation, obviously that is potentially going to happen down the track. But you can confirm that as part of this review at the moment, there's been no discussions had with the industry, including no discussions with private tolling operator, Transurban as part of this.
Uh, thank you for that question. So, uh, as Mr. Gardner discussed this morning, we're still in the early planning phases of this project and so that that's not, not yet planned in at the moment.
And I'll, I'll put to you the position I put this morning, which is that does go to timing, doesn't it? If those discussions haven't happened, it, it really means we're still some way away from having these changes brought forward by the government. That's almost a necessary step, given the number of toll roads that Transurban operate in Sydney.
As I, as I mentioned, we, the project is, has only just started. We're really still in, in its planning phases. So it's got time to run. And as I mentioned before, some of the timeframes to provide options to governments are in sort of the end of this year, Q three, Q four and so forth. So it takes time to do the, do the work and the analysis.
As Treasury, looking at some of those specific options, just turning to those, for example, on time of day tolling, what information does Transport already have about the impact of time of day tolling? There is some time of day tolling, but with a very small difference uh, between the upper and lower price in Sydney at the moment. Um, what analysis has been done or what information, what evidence would you like to put in front of the committee about the impact of time of day tolling as one specific measure?
Uh, yeah, thank you for that. So there is a time of day tolling on the Sydney Harbour Bridge and Harbour Tunnel. So there are different tolls for peak, shoulder and off peak. And that was introduced in two thousand and nine from memory. And, and I can, we can provide on notice some of the traffic volumes by the different times of day. I'll look what we can, what we can provide on that front.
Yeah, I'm more interested in the Transport analysis. Does that make a difference to traffic volumes? Um, is, or is it simply too small to impact on when people are making those travel time choices?
Uh, I think I'll take, I'll, I'll take that question on notice to see whether we can provide some information on the, on the electricity for demand and the, of the, of the pricing of. And it's only done in one, one, only done at Sydney Harbour Bridge and Harbour Tunnel at the moment.
Yes, understood. And.
Perhaps if I can add to that, we obviously could provide you the, the traffic, uh, results pre the introduction of that time of day tolling scheme and then post. Um, but it doesn't necessarily mean that you can extrapolate against all toll roads across Sydney. Um, as Mr. De Cock indicated, some toll roads are more elastic and elastic than others. So you'd have to look at the specifics of each toll road to extrapolate what that information meant.
Yeah, I, I understand. Uh, Chair, would you like, I, I think our time has expired. I'm in your hands as to whether to stop there or keep going.
Um, yeah, I'll just leap in at this point and then come back to you after, if that's okay, Mr. Graham. Um, thank you. I just wanted to ask first, Mr. De Cock, the status of Transport for New South Wales's smart motorway strategy. Can you tell us what that is and what the status of it is at the moment?
Uh, yes, I think, and Miss Berg O'Neill can talk a bit about that as well. Um, but it is an important initiative to be able to get further um, volumes and further safety benefits from using smart technologies on the motorway. And so it has been deployed on, on the M four. It's been running for about a year. And what, what happened was, what we observed was a significant journey time savings and also it has some safety benefits. So it's a great example of, of using technologies to get the best of, of, of existing road assets. And we're looking at how to extend that to other motorways going forward.
So what is it exactly? What, from a, you know, if I'm a driver, what is it? Is it information on the price of tolls or what, what is it?
Uh, it's, it's really more about optimizing the flows. So making sure that, uh, the, the traffic flow is as efficient as possible by adjusting the, the speed of the, of the various lanes. Also, there are, it also controls the feeder roads going on to the motorway to make sure that the, the flow of the traffic is optimized as possible. And to be able to do that, we also need to have a lot of sensors to understand what actual flow of the traffic is and what the flow that feeds into the motorway is. So it's a, quite a sophisticated piece of technology that really optimizes the, the use of that road.
And when you talk about the possible extensions of that strategy or of that technology, what are we referring to?
So I think with this type of technology, we've run that at the M four for about a year now. And so really wanted to turn, take lessons from that and see how we can apply that to other motorways. But I might just refer to Miss Burke O'Neill to talk a little bit where we may plan that technology to, to roll out further.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. De Cock. Um, yes, I, I agree. There's lessons now to be learned from how it has assisted the performance of the M four motorway. Um, and technology like this is a really important consideration in terms of getting the most out of your asset investment, both old and new. So, um, using technology to lift the performance of our asset base is a really key strategic direction for Transport. Um, I don't have anything to add in terms of future plans because I think we're at, we'll be assessing how well this technology is improving the performance of the M four and what lessons we can learn from that and considering its future application. But it's really promising in terms of lifting, helping traffic flow, helping ease congestion and a great way of getting. and a great way of getting the best performance out of our set investment.
Would a potential extension of that technology be congestion um variable congestion pricing, I guess, for tolls? So if you, if you had a system that could um monitor, as you say, that similar to what you've got at the moment running on the M four, I think you said, um could you then use that to adjust up and down tolls at certain times in order to manage that traffic flow? Basically to discourage certain um people from, I guess, getting on uh and reducing the the amount of traffic.
Yeah. You'll, I'm I'm going to pass to my colleague, Miss Rover, because she's got um also quite a bit of experience in this. And as you can see in the way that we're handling these questions, a pretty, pretty integrated approach to road management across transport. So um over to Miss Rover.
Thank you. I think the first thing to say is uh the M four smart motorways technology has only been applied on the M four west, which is of course currently untold and 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 that's the intent, it remains untold. Um in terms of what the scope is, um it includes gantries um at regular intervals. And on those gantries are um speed limits, and that tells the traffic uh at what speed to travel. So instead of um traffic, you know, travelling at a hundred or ninety or um eighty kilometres an hour, um what it does is monitor volumes of traffic and um lowers the speed, so you've got continuous flow. Because you get much more efficiency from a motorway when all the traffic is travelling at the same speed and not stop and starting. So that's why you've got these gantries with those um variable message signs, which give the, the then current speed limit for that section of road. Over and above that, um there are traffic lights on the on-ramps to the motorway, and that regulates how much traffic comes on and off at a point in time. So the the traffic queues up on the on-ramp um and stops at a rate um when it's safe uh to let more traffic onto that uh motorway. The main carriageway traffic light goes green and a certain number of cars um go on. And all that those movements of of speed limitation and the traffic lights on the on-ramp are dependent on um the the traffic flow on on the main carriageway of the motorway. Um but it is applicable to a non-told motorway.
Thank you, yes. So from what I'm, that's really, really helpful. So we've got the gantries um on the M four at the moment that has the the variable, able to to have a variable speed um limit based on the traffic flow. But also um that's clarified that point about the the roads coming in um and the traffic lights being able to monitor that. Um but in terms of future application of this technology, presumably it could be used um to assist with the variable tolling based on congestion?
We haven't looked at that use case, because as I said, it's currently uh implemented on non-told roads. So it isn't applicable to those roads.
Sure. Mr. DeCock?
Uh we, we've got no plans uh for for uh using that technology for for those charges, congestion charges. It's a, that's a technology, as um Miss Rover explained, is about optimizing the traffic flows and also optimizing the safety of the existing uh motorway assets. And uh using that technology to to great effects and uh we've been running that now for a year. And we are trying to really learn from how that uh has worked and uh how we can deploy that in other motorways uh going forward. So it's really, it's a primary objective is to 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 optimize the traffic flow uh or and safety of of our motorways.
Um and when you, so you say that's been in place for a year, um and when you put that in place, who did you source that technology from or who who was the uh the the entity um that was able to help you install that?
So I might uh uh pass that question over to Miss Rover perhaps, or uh who can maybe help with that. The contractual arrangement was to to build that?
Uh yes, I think my understanding was uh it was a um delivery uh contract. And it was let um for both the the civil infrastructure works and the systems, um but we can take that on notice and and confirm that.
Thank you. If you could let me know who um who that was. Um Mr. DeCock, I've got an email um in front of me, again from the call for papers that we um that we passed in the upper house. Um it's an email from you uh to Michelle Huey at uh Transurban. Um noting that you have started the development of an updated smart motorway strategy and asking Transurban for their experience overseas. Um could you elaborate on what that experience was you were asking Transurban for?
I think um, thank you for that question and uh um I think you referred to an email from a while back. Uh where we are, we're looking at uh at smart motorway technologies. We talked about the 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 first one that we did in the M four. Um the team was looking at, so what what else is uh there as part of uh a best practice around the world. And it's actually commonplace for for our technology teams to um have meetings with various companies around the world that have uh leading edge technology to understand uh what's happening. Uh what's the latest technologies, how are other people you, in other jurisdictions uh use that, just to keep us abreast of what's happening. Uh so that we can make a much better informed decision about uh how to uh adopt the latest technology. And that's really part of our future transport technology roadmap, where we've set out our our sort of priorities over the next three to four years in the technology space. And we very much uh welcome the input and collaboration with from the private sector uh to help us on that journey. And through that process, we meet with a a large number of uh companies uh and and other organizations to see what ideas they they have that may possibly applicable for for us going forward. So that's really part of our 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 process to stay on the the front, uh front of the curve of the technology innovation, especially in the in in the transport se- uh sector. And that meeting was um one of many of these type of meetings that we have where uh we are just, I think that's part of our uh role to in in customer um strategy and technology to to keep abreast of the latest innovations from around the world and to see how that might be applicable at uh for us uh to pilot or and potentially implement.
And which other toll road companies did you meet with? In relation to the future, sorry, to the smart uh motorway strategy?
Uh I I can't recall the or uh that exactly, but I can, I can probably take that on notice of who.
That would be very useful. I'm sure you're aware of the um uh US experience where Transurban has been um running uh tolling regimes which do increase uh during congestion times. Um we've seen sort of the pictures of the um the sort of variable tolls um being put up on the entry ramps up into to motorways in in certain states in the US. Um was that the sort of uh overseas experience that you were interested in talking to Transurban about?
Um so I can't recall the exact details of that particular meeting, uh but I think we were interested in a a the range of technologies that's uh and approaches that people had put in place around the world. And I say we're always open to see uh what is the art of the possible uh to see. And then we can take that into account from when we're thinking about the future, uh future directions. So it's part of our sort of uh normal scanning processes to understand what technology innovation and business model innovation exists around the world. And we're aware of those type of technologies, but of course there's, there's others as well. Um and uh but like I say, I could take on notice uh what's particular examples uh that was uh were discovered.
Thank you. And is the current review into the tolling um regime looking at that idea of a a variable toll based on congestion?
So I think that, as I said uh before, the that's the tolling review takes quite a a hol- holistic uh review of uh of uh of tolling. Uh but we're not going to look specifically at uh novel technologies uh and and operational technologies. I think that is a bit side, a bit bit out of scope, but it's going to look at all the elements that I talked about uh about earlier. So I don't think that's uh that uh tolls at different times of day is not necessarily out of scope, conceptually in scope.
Okay, um, thank you. Uh the gantries um on the toll roads that aren't uh retained by the state, so on the the privately owned toll roads. Are those gantries owned by government or by those toll road operators or by someone else?
Maybe um Miss Rover can could answer that question?
Yeah, so so the gantry is part of the um the motorway assets. Um they're under concession to the concession holder for the term of the concession. So uh if it's a private motorway, yes, it's part of the the asset base for that motorway.
So when the gantries are upgraded, for instance, or there's an issue with that, is that wholly the responsible? Oh, sorry, wholly the responsibility of the concession owner or is that something that comes back to government under the contracts?
Uh i- if it's general maintenance or life cycle replacement, um it would be with the the motorway uh concession holder generally. Um obviously, if government does something that impacts that um that gantry, um there may be a conversation about um that who who would pay, for example.
Okay, thank you. Um if I could come back, actually, sorry, I'll just quickly touch on a another point before um passing back to the opposition. Um I just wanted to ask about the um administration fees um involved in tolling. And I I hope that you were watching when we had Transurban or you've read the transcript when we had Transurban here um to talk to the uh committee. There was some confusion about who has responsibility for those administration um fees and particularly for setting that um uh per notice fee of ten dollars for the first notice and twenty dollars for the second notice. Um could you perhaps, um perhaps that's you, Mr. DeCock, if you could clarify who has the responsibility for setting that administration fee?
Um so thank you for that uh question. And before we get into the topic of administration fee, uh maybe just point out that the vast majority of all our customers pay their tolls as they use uh promptly. And obviously then these issues, these fees do uh do not uh not relevant. And also, it's important to know that um that those uh that customer debt is managed separately by each of the toll road operator. And so we only, Transport for New South Wales only gets debts relating to the travel on the Sydney Harbour Bridge and the Harbour Tunnel. So the customer debt that's from the other roads is managed by the the toll road operators, the various toll road operators. So and um if people have not paid their fees, we we do send toll notices to cus- uh to customers uh to recover uh the 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 fees, the the tolls. And and so these uh are as these uh administrative fees are set and uh they're largely to to recover our costs.
Okay, so in a question um that I asked Transurban, they took it on notice and came back. And in an answer, um they tell us that this fee of of ten dollars um was set in two thousand and one and hasn't changed since. Is that correct?
Uh I, that goes well bef- before the time that I joined Transport, so I will have to just take that on notice and get back to you to see uh what information we can provide.
Thank you. Um when I was speaking with Transurban, we were discussing the concept of, you know, really these administration fees should be about recuperating the cost um of sort of having to chase that unpaid toll rather than being something more. And I I went to great lengths to try to get uh um the Transurban um executives to tell me exactly how it could amount to exactly ten dollars um as being the cost of of the that administration. Um to hear that it actually um, subject to your confirmation on a question on notice, uh potentially has been set like that since two thousand and one. What justification is there for having the ten dollar admin fee, given all of the advances in technology since and and everything else?
And so I will ha- I'll have to take on notice the exact sort of cost structure of of the uh of those administrative charges. But we do incur costs when we do uh uh issue toll notices and uh to 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 collect the 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 tolls that have not been paid. And we also have to keep in mind, we're actually investing substantial amount of money into the tolling systems to support the administration as well. So um um so these these uh these administration fees, they help with uh the 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 cost of of operation and the cost of the recovery of the unpaid tolls.
So the cost is the government, but the admin fees are collected by Transurban or by the toll operator?
Uh actually, the the way it works is that um both Transport for New South Wales, we collect um uh debts from the people, from the 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 debts on the Sydney Harbour Bridge and Harbour Tunnel and Transurban uh and the road operators, they collect the debts incurred on their roads. So they're actually two different organizations collecting the debts from the roads that they own.
Are you sending out notices on behalf of Transurban?
Um I I have to take that on on notice, but it will be uh it will be their notices. Uh but um for example, if um if uh if uh to send out a notice, it is required to understand who is the actual owner of a particular license plate. Transport for New South Wales has that data. And uh we are permitted permitted by the the Privacy Commissioner to 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 share that data so that can actually, those toll notices can actually be be sent. How the exact mechanism of who sends what, I I would just have to take that on on notice.
Um just to sort of round that out then, so the the response from Transurban says, and I'll quote, toll notices in New South Wales are produced and issued by Transport for New South Wales on behalf of the various ru- uh toll road operators. This is because only T F N S W has access to the drive system, the New South Wales Driver Licensing Registration System. So they're saying that it is Transport for New South Wales that produce and issue all of the toll notices, the overdue tolls or the, you know, the unpaid tolls. They're all produced by Transport for New South Wales. And yet, I had a very long discussion with them about the costs involved to them um for issuing those notices and the fact that they receive the fee for the administration. How can that be?
So I I will um, I will say, I'll I'll take on notice exactly what the arrangements are, but it is correct that we do have the drive system that has the record of the owner of a particular license plate with the the details to to send the notice. Uh so we may send it on their behalf. I would like to confirm that on notice. Um so um uh there are a, when these type of arrangements happen, there are actually cross-charging arrangements between the two organizations for the various services offered. And again, they're quite complex and I would like to take that on notice, uh what we can provide in that space.
Thank you. And just before I throw to the opposition, just also if you could take on notice whether you charge the full ten dollar um administration fee to these toll operators from Transport for New South Wales? Because that would explain why we're being told that it costs them ten dollars for every notice, if that's what they're being charged.
Uh I'll take that on notice and see what information we have.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Graham?
Thank you, Chair. I might um ask some follow-up questions in this area and then hand to my colleague. And then I'll return to some of those reform um policy reform questions I was asking. On the administration fees, because we did get some strong evidence on these, um can you tell us how much uh did Transport collect in the last in each of the last two financial years, uh for example, in administration fees?
Uh I actually, uh I uh thank you so much for the questions. I do not have that data at my fingertips. Uh again, I'll take that on notice to see what what we can provide.
Thank you. And noting that would be for the Harbour Bridge and the Harbour Tunnel, could you also take on notice, and you know, you may be able to provide this or you may not, the total amount that was collected in administration fees from drivers?
Uh so I think in in that with regards to that question, uh we can only provide the information that relates to our tolling operations, not the ones that are run by.
But you believe if Transurban also gave that information, then we'd have a complete picture. Is that true?
Um so I think we can uh provide the information that's uh uh of our particular tolling operations and and toll notices. Uh but again, uh Transurban is a private uh organization, they will have that that type data set themselves and they're probably best placed to provide that information.
But my question was, if we get their information as well, will we have collected the set? Is that all the administration fees that are judged to drop us?
That'll be correct. The two, two major op- uh two, it's uh our roads plus all the other toll operator roads. And uh and then the Transurban is um one operator, but as one of my colleagues mentions, uh some of those concessions are owned by multiple uh parties.
And this is similar to a question the Chair asked, but um you've said this is, this largely covers the cost of administration. What proportion of the uh fees are actually go towards the cost of administration for the toll roads which you operate?
Yeah, I think, thank you for that question. So obviously, uh, these toll notices, uh, we like not to send any toll notices, actually, and the vast majority of our customers obviously pay uh through their uh current arrangements and it's all done electronically. But in case people uh do not uh um have the right mechanism set up or haven't paid their tolls, we do send these toll notices. We do incur costs for that to to send messages or letters and so forth and and also uh to support our call centers. Uh, and also, we need to invest in our tolling systems to support uh these type of operations. So all these uh uh so the fee, the administration fees uh do uh support their operations and investments in technology and investments in our
Yes, I'm I'm happy for you to take this on notice, but administration charges have, administration costs have dropped dramatically since two thousand and one. What proportion of the fees that are collected now go on administration for your roads? Could you take that on notice?
I I'm happy to take that uh that on notice. And the other thing I would uh mention is that we obviously continuously invest in new technologies to be able to do that uh as efficiently as possible.
Yeah, and I agree. And given that fact, uh, we are likely to make a recommendation that that fee be reviewed. The committee is likely to make a recommendation would be my guess, based on what we've heard, subject to the views of other committee members. Would Transport support a review of that ten dollar fee or that, in the end, a twenty twenty dollar fee? Uh, given that it seems to have been set so long ago?
I think uh um in in principle or conceptually, it would make sense to to review the fees and totally to make sure that they're still uh fit for purpose.
Thank you. Um, that's a, that's a very helpful response when it comes to forming our recommendations. The second issue when it came to administration was the multiple toll notices. Uh, again, we were told, uh, this could be fixed. So the prospect of getting uh letter after letter in the mail, one for each toll notice, which for some people in financial distress, uh is itself very distressing, uh the multiple envelopes. Uh, there seems to be no reason for this not to be in a single notice. Uh, we were told that could happen, but in fact, it appeared Transport might be the holder. Uh, is this something that you would support fixing? Is there any reason why this couldn't be done from a Transport point of view?
Um, so uh, yes, thank you for that question. And I think uh, I said, mentioned before, the vast majority of our customers pay uh pay their bills. And some people, uh, for whatever reason, they have sort of uh circumstances where they find themselves into uh difficult or uh circumstances and uh and may have financial hardship. And it is possible that they uh they get multiple notices. And uh, so in that case, we really recommend that our customers uh talk to our call center. Uh, we will then consider what happened, uh, what are particular individual circumstances, including uh if there's many uh many toll notices that have been sent. And we will then work out a plan for ha- for those individuals uh to to have to address what the situation that they're in in a sensible way. So we really recommend people to contact our call center so we can really understand the issue and and so tailor it.
Mr. De Cock, why should they have to call you? My question is, why are they getting multiple notices? A single toll journey, a single journey through Sydney might attract multiple tolls, multiple administration fees, multiple letters in the mailbox of these financially distressed people. And they find that overwhelming. Why don't, uh, why can't they simply receive a single notice, a single administration fee, uh, a single bit of handling to say, look, you, here's, here's what you owe. Uh, perhaps from this single toll trip that went across a range of roads in Sydney. Why can't we do that? Why do they have to ring you?
Uh, so uh um, so in terms of the toll notices, they're sent by the two different organizations, ourselves and then the private operator. In terms of uh our roads, um, we have quite old legacy system in the tolling space. We have just uh are just in the process of operating our uh our uh technology systems and that may allow us to be uh to be smarter about how we uh can combine some of those uh toll uh toll notices as well going forward. And I I noticed that maybe Camilla Drover, my colleague, can fairly uh add to that.
Yeah, I was just gonna um comment that as a mitigant to anyone getting a toll um notice, if um if toll road users have a valid um account, and it can be an account with any um retail provider, either E-Toll or Linked, for example, um with that, we can uh do number plate recognition. So that means if their toll pass fails or they don't have a toll pass, but they've got an account and they can have an account for multiple vehicles, it means their their toll is automatically paid for them. And that's a good measure and relatively new technology to mitigate um people running up um multiple uh costs and therefore generating multiple toll notices.
Yeah, I understood, Miss Drover, and that's a, that's a new development, uh perhaps should have been quicker, but a a welcome one. But do you agree that we should address this problem where people are getting multiple letters in the mail, multiple fines, multiple administration fees? Why can't Transport fix this? Is there any reason?
So as I, as I mentioned before, um, our trolling systems were quite uh old and we are modernizing those as we speak. And in principle,
So how long will people have to wait?
Uh, I can't give you that answer. I I can't give you that answer right now, but in principle, to streamline the customer experience uh and saying consolidate it in principle uh is is a good idea, but we have to look at what the systems uh can can do. And so I would, I'm happy to take that on notice to see uh what is possible and and potentially what some of the timeframes are.
All right, I might hand to that point my colleague.
Thank you. I I just wanted to follow up on one aspect that just got raised in that while they're questioning and then go on to a new one. Can I, Mr. De Cock, did you say that you were recovering investment through admin fees? Did I hear you correctly?
Um, no, uh, what I said is that we we charge administrative fees uh to uh cover the cost of uh of um uh of doing the the toll notices.
Okay, it does, and admin fees, we're not recovering costs of any investment through admin fees, just to be very clear.
Um, just just trying to understand uh
As it, it's, it would be expected that you would recover the cost of capital investment through a toll. That's logical. Um, but we're not recovering the cost of any capital investment through admin fees, are we? It has absolutely no relevance whatsoever to how the admin fees are set.
It's uh, I think there's no uh correlation between the admin fees and and the and the tolling and and the and the toll roads, no.
Okay, and all the gantries or any of the admin systems? Okay, good. I'm I'm glad I did not hear you correctly. Um, can I just move on to just a different question, which I think might be best addressed to Miss Drover um as well? Where are we up to with the M six?
Uh, the M six stage one, we awarded the contract uh last year and uh the onsite works, including paddling, is due to commence about this month, over this month.
And uh, is the tolling regime public yet?
Yes, it is.
And what criteria is used to design it?
Uh, so it was informed um by the New South Wales Tolling Principles. Um, the M six stage one connects directly underground to Westconnex. Um, so the Westconnex tolling regime also informed uh the M six stage one. Um, given to use the M six stage one, you do need to travel on Westconnex as well.
Okay, the twenty fourteen principles, uh, can you give us a quick summary of them again?
Uh, yes, um, there are, there there are eleven of them. Um, do you want me to go through them individually?
Uh, no, I think we'll take it all on notice, but the ones that I'm most interested in is, is in pricing of the M six. Uh, is it priced broadly speaking around cost recovery or is it also priced mindful of any future sale?
Uh, no, but it does align with one of the principles, um, which uh aligns with um the pricing of um consistent uh toll roads and and particularly taking a network perspective.
Okay, so having set the network price for Westconnex, we're not going to price it. Uh, we have to price it so it's effectively neutral. Is that a fair summary um to Westconnex or?
Uh, no, there's no, um, it's not, there's no impact on the the Westconnex revenue. But of course, in using the M six, they do use Westconnex as well.
Picking my ears on this, how long does the M six concession last for?
The the M six stage one is not under concession, so it's being um delivered by Transport under a designer construction contract.
Okay, uh, is there any, uh, is Transport preparing any work uh around um creating or granting a concession on the M six?
Uh, no, not to my knowledge.
Okay, and so this will be revenue that goes directly to Transport, correct?
Yes, the revenue from the M six um goes towards the ongoing operations and maintenance costs of running the M six. So the mechanical electrical systems, um incident response, uh life cycle replacement, et cetera.
And when will you expect the first dollar of revenue to be arriving uh from the M six? Where where is it in the forwards?
Uh, so when the M six stage one opens, which I think is twenty twenty uh five, um, revenue will commence on opening and that revenue will flow through to Transport to fund those operations and maintenance and life cycle costs.
And how long?
And just, I might just jump in there, Mr. Mooki, just to say the um, you agree with the treasury position, Miss Drover, that for the Western Harbour Tunnel, that first dollar will be received in twenty twenty eight. Is that correct?
Uh, I'm not familiar with the the evidence that that the Treasury gave. Um, but what I can say is that the Western Harbour Tunnel has been announced as a toll road. Um, but beyond that, the tolling arrangements have not been uh determined by government.
Just on the M six uh as well, how long is the toll set to last for?
Uh, well, the the toll has been set on opening. Um, it's not under concession. Um, so uh the assumption is that will continue uh to be applied to pay for those ongoing uh operations and maintenance cost of the toll road until it's under the decision of government to uh change that assumption.
Are we recovering construction costs through a toll?
Um, given the the economics of 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 that um project, um, the revenue largely goes towards just paying the operations and maintenance costs of the motorway.
Okay, so is that, it, does it include us having to pay any debt incurred by the public uh for that? Are we, is that included as an operational cost, the finance cost of actually finding the money or not?
Uh, so um, no, so there is no, um, the funding for the M six comes from Treasury. Um, from consolidated revenue.
The budget, yes.
Yeah, the budget. So there is no um private finance associated with that project.
Okay, got it. And so can I also just ask, how much money do you expect to raise in the first ten years?
From the M six?
Yeah.
Um, well, that would be a function of 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 what traffic actually turns up, um, what CPI is um in the first ten years, um, the mix of heavy vehicles versus light vehicles. Um, so a whole range of factors will go into what the revenue will be. But what we do know is the tolling regime, so the starting price of the toll road um and uh and how that toll price will escalate with time.
Do you have a financial model for this project?
Um, I would have to take that on notice.
Surely, we're not building a multi-billion dollar road without having a financial model behind it?
Uh, yes, but the M six stage one is not uh under concession and was not contemplated to be under concession. So I'm I'm happy to take that away and see what information we can provide.
Well, do you have traffic forecasts?
Uh, the the final business case would have um undertaken traffic modeling, so there would have been some assumptions adopted and uh and and modeling made to, yes.
Picking my ears, is that business case public or?
Um, like any project of that nature, um, the final business case summary or the business case summary is published by INSW on their website.
No, that wasn't my question. Um, I was actually asking, you know, not a summary, but actually about the full business case and the models that sit behind it. Is this publicly available information?
Uh, final business cases are usually cabinet in confidence.
So, well, to be fair, on the Westconnex, it was released in full, but that might be the position adopted now. So has there been a discretionary choice by made by the government that you're aware of to keep that cabinet in confidence?
Um, well, my understanding is the final business case is cabinet in confidence, so I don't know the decision-making around that. That's my understanding of the status of the document.
But presumably, you've taken traffic forecasts and you multiplied it by the toll and you've done it over ten years and therefore you would have a revenue estimate. I'm not asking you what it is right now, but there is surely Transport has a revenue estimate for the M six stage one by year.
Some analysis would have been done to to look at um whether the the toll revenue would uh could cover the ongoing operations and maintenance costs of that asset, yes.
Yes, so um therefore, uh, because I presume the toll is a percentage of that cost broken up by time over the number of expected users, because that's basically how we design these models. Can you, I just repeat my my question, how much will the the government be collecting through this toll in the first ten years? Do we have even an estimate or a range as to what we expect?
Well, it would depend on the assumptions you've adopted. Um, but my understanding is
You adopted. Given the assumptions you adopted, not me, what is the forecast for the first ten years?
Uh, I'm not able to provide that because again, it would depend on on the CPI assumptions, et cetera. Um, but some analysis was undertaken to confirm that we could pay for the ONM costs based on the revenue that that uh toll road will generate.
Well, CPI is two and a half percent is a long-term rate here. Like, uh, except that you will index it according to the long-term rate of CPI, which is two point five percent. Let me just ask you this, do we know how much revenue we expect to collect in the first year, the M six?
Well, will there be some expectations around that, yes. But, you know, as we've seen in the last two years with COVID, um, expected traffic uh is is a function of a whole range of factors, including um economic activity, demographics, et cetera.
Look, I accept this, but, Miss Drover, this is the newest toll, this will be one of the newest toll roads that comes onto the network. It's different in that, as you rightly say, there's no concession over it. Um, uh, but basically, the summary that you're giving us is that this this road is due to open in three years' time. We don't know how people are going to use it. We don't know how much revenue it's going to affect in the first year. We certainly have no idea how much revenue it's going to affect in the last ten years. That is the impression you're leaving us with. Would you like to, is that wrong? And would you like to give us any further information that would uh disturb that us from reaching that conclusion?
I can confirm that the analysis undertaken at the time confirmed that the revenue would cover the operations and maintenance cost of the asset. And that's the intent to which we'll apply that toll revenue to run to run the motorway.
Okay, I'll pass back to my colleague there.
Thank you, um, thank you for that. Uh, I I mean, I have to say, again, I'm very surprised by the lack of information which the agencies are prepared to provide about these tolling arrangements. We are here trying to weigh up the cost and benefit of these toll roads and reach some conclusion for the Parliament. And frankly, you're making our job very, very hard with this lack of information. Um, I might, I just want to turn back to the um questions about some of those reforms. Um, I will start by asking about the um existing toll rebates. And I'm interested just in the information that the governor holds already about um uh what's going on with tolls, because uh the information a driver can get is actually quite good. They can see um how much they've paid in tolls from uh customer service. That's how they know whether they're close to the rebate or not, and that information's coming into government you know, uh, on a daily basis. Um, could could one of you, whoever is most appropriate, whichever official is most appropriate, just tell us what information does government receive about uh how much dri- drivers are paying in tolls? Um, and how is that dealt with in government?
Uh, so thank you for the question. I might start with that and then I might also pass it over to some of my colleagues. They can probably add some uh uh richest system. I think you're talking in particularly about the toll relief scheme, uh, which um uh is a focus of um providing relief um for the tolls of people who are heavy users uh of toll roads. So for example, if people spend over fourteen hundred and six dollars in a year, they get a free registration. If they spent uh eight hundred forty-three dollars, they get a half-price uh registration. So I wonder, I think one of the questions uh this alludes to how does that Service New South Wales get this information? And so um the information about um the the toll road usage in terms of the trip and and the toll paid and and the vehicle is provided uh by the toll road operator. So for Transport for New South Wales, we provide that information to Service New South Wales. They collect it from the other motorway operators and they compile that information uh to make their assessments uh for who qualifies for toll relief uh and for various uh thresholds.
And it's pretty much live information, isn't it? It's very up to date.
Uh, um, I'm not exactly sure the the Uh, um, I'm not exactly sure the, the exact frequency of the day, of the data, but it is reasonably frequent. I, I can take it on notice, uh, how we as Transport New South Wales, how frequently we supply that information uh, to, um, uh, to service New South Wales. The one thing to, to do, take into account is the information that they collect is for the purposes of the toll relief only. So it focuses on, uh, information for light vehicles, um, and, and vehicles that are registered in New South Wales. So it doesn't include all vehicle information.
Right, that's useful to know. And will that, that information is obviously valuable as you're reviewing toll policy. Will that information be available to the review as you look at what the options are here?
So the, the, the review will, um, I, I use the information that's available and the data sets that are available to, to do our analysis. And, um, so we'll, we have some information obviously on, on, on the, that, that particular, uh, parts of the network that's, that we, that we run.
Yeah.
Mr. Graham, uh, your time has expired. Maybe we could come back to this unless there's just one final question you want to make on this.
Now, I think Chair, you should, um, take out.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Graham. Um, just coming back then to these admin fees. Um, and to be honest, it's a little bit like pulling teeth to find out exactly what is going on with these admin fees. Um, from what I understand, a, and, and can I just be clear that, you know, I understand that, um, both your, yourself, um, Mr. DeCock, as well as the Transurban executives have made it very clear that, you know, it's a small number of people who get this admin fee. It's a small number of, um, you know, we don't want these people to get an admin fee, et cetera, et cetera. But the fact is that, um, a huge number of people do get admin fees and they are often three times as much as the original toll. And they can actually tally up to tens of thousands of dollars and have resulted in people experiencing significant hardship, which is why we're so concerned, I guess. Um, but when we look at that ten-dollar, um, fee, from what I can tell now, uh, it is Transport for New South Wales. And again, if we could just focus on the, um, admin fees that are not in respect of the toll roads run by the government, but we're talking about the toll roads that are run by private operators, um, namely Transurban for eleven of our twelve, uh, toll roads. Um, with those particular tolls, when there is a, um, uh, a need for a notice to be sent out to somebody, I think what I'm hearing is that that is definitely done by Transport for New South Wales, although subject to you going and checking and coming back to us on notice. Um, my understanding also is that there is some sort of video matching fee that Transport for New South Wales charges to, um, the likes of Transurban, uh, which is significantly less than the ten dollars. Um, but that the ten-dollar admin fee is recovered by those operators. Um, is this your understanding?
So, um, I think the, the video, um, uh, reference fees are very different from, from the admin fees. So I think as Miss Drover already explained, um, we're using new technologies, uh, to help prevent these, uh, issuing these tolls in, uh, these toll notices in the first place. So, uh, for example, if a customer perhaps hasn't got a tag or the, the tag mal, uh, is malfunctioning, our cameras can pick up the, the registration and number of the vehicle. And if that registration number is linked to an account, we can then automatically apply the, the toll. And then there's a small fee has been applied to, to do that service. And that actually prevents for people from having a, a toll notice in the first place. So we're using the new technologies to really minimize the fact that we have to send these toll notices. Toll notes are only sent as a, as, again, as a last resort. Uh, the vast majority are done through, um, people using their, their tags or we're using our video matching technology.
But that's quite illustrative because that, that fee that you get charged, and I've been charged that fee, um, when my, uh, E-tag hasn't worked, it's like fifty-five cents or something. So that's, that fifty-five cents presumably represents the cost of video matching.
Um, the, the, the video matching fees, actually, there's a range of fees, uh, depending on which of the motorways. So, uh, again, I'll take it on notice to provide that if, if, if.
Thank you. Um, so when I was speaking with Transurban, I read to them a section of the North Connects concession agreement, um, which stated, and I'll read from the concession agreement. So this is with Transurban and the government. Um, an administrative charge will be reasonably determined by the project company in consultation with RMS, having regard to, one, different casual user products that the project company may wish to implement, two, the actual anticipated number of casual users, and three, the anticipated recovery rate of tolls and administrative charges. Um, there's also another section that talks about the ability for the, um, project company to change that administrative charge in consultation with, um, RMS. So there seems to be, uh, an ability to do that. Um, and when I asked Transurban why they hadn't approached Transport for New South Wales about adjusting that administration fee, they said that there needed to be a, some, like, whole of industry change for that to take place. Um, but that they were very willing to discuss it with you. Um, I'm confused because the concession agreement clearly gives them the power to suggest that change. Can you give any, shed any light on whose responsibility it is to make sure that those admin fees are actually in line with actual cost?
Yes, I thank you for, for your question. I'm actually not familiar with the documents that you refer to. And maybe some of my colleagues, uh, maybe Miss Drover knows more, more about that document. Um, so I'm not aware of, uh, of that particular, uh, documents. But, uh, we, we're pleased to receive it then. We can have a, a look further into that. Maybe, um, Miss Drover, would, are you familiar with that particular part of the concession contract?
Uh, look, obviously I haven't got the North Connects concession deal in front of me, but I think we'll take that on notice and just clarify that position.
Thank you. I, I'd like to know whose responsibility it is, um, and who has the power. If, if everybody's willing to adjust the administration fee, um, who's, who's the obstacle?
I think we'll, uh, we'll take that on, on notice and, and let you know what we can come back with.
Thank you. Um, similarly, in relation to the idea of aggregating the penalty notices, um, it seems like such an obvious thing to be able to do. Um, when we spoke to Transurban, they said that was also in the hands of, of Transport. Um, is that your understanding as well? And are you making, um, any attempts, uh, to change that and aggregate the, the penalty notices?
Um, so, uh, as I think I mentioned before, um, that the issuing of the penalty notices, uh, obviously is using our, our, at the moment, our legacy technology systems. We are investing in updating our tolling technology. And I took it on notice, uh, earlier, uh, to see what this new technology can do, whether it's possible to, to, to aggregate and simplify, uh, some of the penalty notices, get better outcomes for, for the customer and for us as well. So I'll take that on notice to, to see what, uh, what could be done, uh, with the investment in new technology.
So the admin fee was set at ten dollars in two thousand and one. It's now two thousand and twenty-two. We're twenty-one years down the track. Are you telling me that we need to investigate new technology in order to issue some aggregated penalty notice?
Uh, so as I say, I'm not familiar with the detailed operations of the, the penalty notices. And, uh, and I will, uh, I'll get back to you, uh, uh, what the new technology can do in this space.
Because with respect, that seems extraordinary, uh, in every other, um, industry and other states. You know, it's possible to aggregate penalties into one notice. Um, if the government has that as its responsibility and has chosen not to do it, um, with the cost being thousands of dollars to individuals who are unable to pay their toll in the first place. That seems quite extraordinary, don't you think?
So, um, just in terms of, uh, when you talk about, uh, the, uh, customers who have sort of got very large sums of money regarding to toll notices and so forth. Uh, as I mentioned before, most people pay their tolls, but there are, we recognize people have hardship and, and unique circumstances where they're unable to pay. And in that particular case, we understand that toll notices can add up. Uh, as I say, we really suggest those customers contact us. We have a, a special, uh, team dealing with this. They will understand the individual circumstances and understand, uh, look at what is, uh, what's, uh, a reasonable path forward is and tailor that to the, to the individuals. And then we have, we have a separate team set up in Transport for New South Wales to, to exactly deal with those, uh, people who have real hardship. And then we'll deal with those, uh, a large number of toll notices.
The, it, it's, it's really interesting because these talking points, um, are almost word for word what we he, heard from, from Transurban. And it's, in fact, what you had said previously as well. Um, the fact is that some people are suffering extreme hardship regardless of whatever, whatever it is you're doing. Um, and we know about the, um, significant number of people that Transurban is chasing through the courts. So clearly whatever you're doing at the moment isn't working. It would seem that an aggregate, uh, penalty notice would be the least anybody could do. I'm just quite genuinely shocked that in twenty-one years, that's not something that anyone has thought about doing. Is that your evidence today?
So, uh, as I mentioned before, we have, uh, a, a special team set up to deal with these hardship cases. And we can, uh, make, uh, special adjustments and put people on payment plans that reflects the situation. And, uh, uh, as long as people contact us, we can help them. And, uh, and you can ask Transurban how they do it for, for their, uh, customers. Um, as I mentioned before, we do have some legacy systems that don't allow, allow us to have the flexibility we want to do in terms of customers. We are investing in a new system and I took it on notice earlier to see what we can do with the investment in the new tolling systems, including a, a customer management, uh, uh, system.
Thank you. I understand that a class action has been launched against Transurban, um, its Queensland arm, uh, in Queensland with over twenty-three thousand claimants in relation to excess administrative fees. What is Transport for New South Wales doing, uh, to mitigate against the risk of that happening here?
So, um, I, I don't think I can comment on any class action, uh, in, in, in Queensland. Um, as I said before, we, we take, uh, we understand people can have hardship and we have a separate arrangements in place, as I mentioned before. And also, um, over the last few years, uh, with the COVID pandemic, uh, we've also, uh, um, stopped, uh, much of the debt collection activities, understanding that a large number of people may suffer hardship, uh, as part of the, the COVID, uh, the COVID pandemic. So we, we do take these things very seriously and, uh, and, uh, and we have, as I say, over the last few years, uh, restrained from, uh, using some of the, the, uh, the debts, uh, collection. And so we have, as I said, put in place, uh, special teams that deal with hardship. And many of our, many, uh, people have actually contacted us. We have seen some increase over the last few years, uh, because of COVID, uh, uh, nineteen that they suffered.
Lots of people, yes, lots of people suffering hardship. Um, Mr. DeCock, have you spoken with Transurban executives since the tenth of December in relation to this inquiry?
Uh, I, I personally, uh, haven't, no.
Okay, thank you, Miss Drover. Let me ask the same question to you, please.
Um, I was on site, uh, at the M four, five link and, and Rosalind changed last week. Um, Transurban hosted us at the M four and five link. Uh, we mentioned that I was attending the inquiry. That was the extent of our discussions.
Thank you, Ms. Burke O'Neill.
Oh, I have not had contact with Transurban.
Thank you. Um, perhaps we could turn to, um, the ombudsman. Um, I, uh, assume, Mr. DeCock, that you, um, had read the, the transcript of our conversation or were broadly aware of that conversation we had with the tolling customer ombudsman. Um, given the concern about people undergoing financial hardship and given the almost monopoly situation that we have in toll roads in, in Sydney with Transurban, um, are you satisfied with the structure of the tolling customer ombudsman? And in particular, um, the fact that the ombudsman isn't recognized by the Australian-New Zealand Ombudsman Association?
Uh, so it's, uh, thank you for that question. And so we're aware of the, the tolling ombudsman that's in place, uh, to, um, address issues from customers from Links Sydney, Links Brisbane and Links, uh, Melbourne, established in two thousand and four. Um, the tolling ombudsman is not a New South Wales, uh, government body and we don't have, uh, any authority to, to intervene i- in, in that. And, and also our New South Wales government doesn't determine the, the scope nor the powers of that tolling ombudsman. And what I, we do have here within, uh, New South Wales government, if people, if customers have complaints, we have our normal customer complaints handling in Transport and there's other mechanisms customers can, can lodge complaints. Uh, so yes, we, we don't have any, uh, any, uh, authority or, or, um, or powers to change the scope of the tolling ombudsman.
And I, I understand you don't have authority or powers, but given, um, that you are on the other side of contracts with, um, toll road operators, um, and given all of these, uh, as you say, people contacting you with hardship complaints, uh, presumably Transport for New South Wales still has an opinion on the ombudsman and whether or not it is fit for purpose?
As I say, we do not have, uh, authority or power. I'm not aware of any review that's been done on, on this space. So, um, um, uh, so I can't really comment any further on that.
Okay, uh, back to you, Mr. Graham.
Thank you, Chair. Uh, just returning to those reform questions. Um, one of the proposals that's been floated publicly, uh, in relation to, uh, the government, um, considerations in this area, and I really took this public discussion as speculation at that point. Um, nothing strong goes, so I don't want to put it to you more strongly than that, was about a toll cap. Now, a toll cap exists at the moment across, uh, West Connects in theory or soon operating in practice when the third, uh, when, when the final leg of West Connects opens. Um, can you give us any background about how Transport thinks about a toll cap? Um, and about how possible it might be to widen that as a solution to, uh, toll pricing in Sydney?
Thank you, yes. I, I might start the question and then pass over to Miss Drover. But we're aware of the public, uh, um, debates about the toll cap and, uh, as being mentioned as part of the review. Um, I might pass over to, to Mr. Over to, to explain, uh, what a toll cap, uh, means and what implications that that may have, um, on the tolling concessions.
Okay, first thing to say is, um, there are actually two toll caps that are in, um, place. Um, they're both for the only distance-based motorway concessions in Sydney, so the M seven and West Connects. Both of those, the toll cap, um, goes along the lines of, uh, when you've traveled half the full length of the motorway, um, the rest of your journey is free. Now, as you rightly said, when West Connects is complete and you can travel the near thirty-three kilometers, um, the value of that toll cap will, will become of greater value, you know, the longer the journey, um, you have. Um, but if I can just reiterate, the toll cap only applies currently for distance-based, uh, the two distance-based motorways that we have in, in New South Wales. Um, and in terms of the, the, uh, the review that's, um, recently commenced, um, we're looking at a whole range of, of, of options and alternatives. Um, so I'm sure we'll be looking at that issue.
Hmm, and I mean, perhaps one way that might be helpful to ask about this is, uh, Treasury were keen to draw a distinction between things that might trigger compensation and things that might not. Is it which bucket is, uh, potential extension of a toll cap in when you think about this?
So I'm not clear what, what, what you question, sorry.
Would this, would this mean, i- the introduction of a toll cap could be done without interfering in the existing contracts? Is that a, an accurate statement? That is, it would not trigger compensation. It would be something that, um, government could look at independently of those agreements. Is that?
There'd be. Well, it would depend on whether, how toll caps were introduced, whether it was per concession or in aggregate. Um, I wouldn't like to speculate on, on how that might be implemented because of so many ways it could be implemented. Um, but that's the purpose of the review, to have a look at some of those options um, and how it goes towards addressing the larger picture of affordability across the network.
Yeah, and on that question about what we know about how much drivers pay, um, there, as we've discussed, there's quite good information about how much drivers are paying for that toll rebate. Uh, it, it is something that's known based on that information. Uh, how many drivers, for instance, are, uh, stepping over a particular threshold when you come to think about that toll cap? So paying, for example, more than three thousand dollars per toll tag or three thousand five hundred or four thousand, when you come to look at that question, is that accurate?
Well, I think if I can just reiterate what Mr. De Cock said, the toll relief scheme doesn't apply to all vehicles. So it doesn't apply to heavy vehicles generally. It's the private vehicles and I believe it's light vehicles as well. So it's only a subset of all road toll users.
Yeah, but I thought that was quite helpful information. But Ms. Drover, I'm just asking, does government know enough to be able to properly assess that option? From the information we've been given, we think you do for light vehicles, not for others. You've got all that information at your fingertips to make that call about, for example, the threshold that might kick in. Is that accurate or do you need more information?
Or like any modelling, you'd have to adopt some assumptions and model on that basis.
Well, do you? Because don't you have all this information coming in on a daily basis?
Well, Mr. De Cock has indicated what information we have as related to the toll relief scheme. And we've got the information that Transurban is required to publish, which is the traffic count data, which is published quarterly.
All right. If that's your answer, I might move to another topic. I might ask you about the Harbour Tunnel. Are you currently considering two-way tolling or one-way tolling on the Harbour Tunnel and the Harbour Bridge?
So I think as has been said earlier today, the Sydney Harbour Tunnel concession expires at the end of August this year. There's been no decision of government about what will happen with that. But the base case is that that toll would continue unless there's another decision of government. I suspect it will go towards paying for the other costs, the operations and maintenance, perhaps on the Sydney Harbour Bridge.
Would Transport have concerns? Would Transport have concerns if there was two-way tolling on the Western Harbour Tunnel, but one-way tolling continued on the Harbour Bridge and the Harbour Tunnel from a traffic management point of view? Obviously, there's old tolling question, but from a traffic management point of view, would Transport have concerns if it was two-way on one harbour crossing but one-way on the others?
You'd have to undertake traffic modelling to look at the level of tolls and the direction of the tolling and to look at the impact on the overall network. But it's fair to say there would be three harbour crossings, including the Western Harbour Tunnel. And we need to look at the interplay and the connection between those three crossings.
That's a statement of the bleeding obvious, Ms. Drover. If there was two-way tolling on the Western Harbour Tunnel and one-way tolling continued on the bridge and the tunnel, would that lead to traffic chaos or not? Is that a traffic problem separate to the tolling questions?
It would depend on the level of the tolling applied. So that would have to be accounted for when you looked at the toll pricing across the three harbour crossings.
So could, from a traffic point of view, is, could that be manageable if the toll prices were set right? Or would it just lead to traffic chaos? Have you got any advice for us as we look at those issues?
We'd have to look at it from a traffic modelling perspective, but it has the potential to cause problems, yes. If you have very different tolling regimes for similar adjacent crossings.
Yeah. And what might that look like? Just give us some, what would Transport be concerned about as you're trying to weigh up those impacts on the city? These are very important decisions for traffic management in Sydney.
Well, it would depend on the assumptions that you adopted, of course. But what you'd want to mitigate is distortion of traffic flow across the three harbour crossings.
All right. I might hand to my colleague on this subject.
Ms. Drover, what modelling have you already, have you done to, in respect to the traffic implications of, well, actually, well, unpack this. Firstly, the Sydney Harbour Tunnel's toll concession is expiring in August, is it not?
That's right.
And what date is it actually expiring?
I think it's the 31st of August 22.
So on 1 September, what happens from Transport's perspective?
Well, if there's no decision of government and we are awaiting that decision, I suspect the toll will continue, go towards funding the other costs of operating and maintaining that asset. Although the concession ends, there are still costs associated with the operations, the maintenance, the incident response, et cetera, running the motorway.
And what advice, has Transport prepared any advice for the government in respect to the expiry of the Sydney Harbour Tunnel concession whatsoever?
Not to my knowledge.
You've provided no advice to the government about what to do with the toll concession expiring?
Well, what we are doing is looking at the asset management solution. So who will undertake the operations and maintenance of that asset when the concession expires? Because the concession air falls away, so someone needs to do the O N M on that tunnel. So we're currently in a tender process looking at that. And that tender process is looking at providing services potentially for the future Western Harbour Tunnel and an option to also do the Sydney Harbour Tunnel. But that's, that's not a concession. It's just the operation maintenance services for those tunnels.
So packaging up the operational maintenance for the Harbour Tunnel with the Western Harbour Tunnel is an option that's been considered?
It's an option and yes.
Okay. And is that because the two's fate are related or why is that being considered?
Economies of scale. They're both under Harbour Tunnels. They're both BMS tubes. There's some synergies. They're reasonably well co-located, so it would make sense. And Transport for New South Wales doesn't have that in-house capability to operate and maintain a tunnel of that nature. So it's looking to outsource it and we have to outsource the Western Harbour Tunnel as well. So it makes sense to look at, are there synergies to package it together and get those economies of scale?
So Ms. Drover, I'm just going to assume, and tell me if I'm wrong here, but the Western Harbour Tunnel is not opening on 1 September this year. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Right. So how are we intending to, firstly, have we made a final investment decision on the Western Harbour Tunnel yet?
Yes, we have.
And so this procurement process would effectively give whoever it is who you choose, or have you actually let the contract for the operational maintenance of the Western Harbour Tunnel or?
No, no. And that's the tender process that we're currently in at the moment. So the intent was to procure someone that was experienced and skilled in the operations and maintenance of tunnels, particularly under Harbour Tunnels. They could assist in the procurement process for Western Harbour Tunnel, package two, providing that insights to ensure that we optimise whole of life cost for Western Harbour Tunnel. And in parallel, we are also seeking an option for them to undertake the operations and maintenance of the Sydney Harbour Tunnel. So we'll go through that procurement process and depending on the outcome of that, we'll decide what we're going forward with.
Okay, but I'm therefore going to infer that the decision-making timetable for the Western Harbour Tunnel operational maintenance will be before 1 September, therefore.
We are hoping to have on board a provider that can support the procurement, as I said, for Western Harbour Tunnel with analysis on whole of life optimisation. So they work with our design and construction tenders, assessing their offers, et cetera. But we will have an opportunity when we actually get a final design and a final contractor on board following the Western Harbour Tunnel procurement process to reconfirm.
Ms. Drover. But that has to be all done by 1 September, that's my question. Because if it's the case that we are responsible for the operational maintenance of the Harbour Tunnel after 1 September and the two have a joint fate, then clearly we are going to be letting the contract for the Western Harbour Tunnel operational maintenance before 1 September. Otherwise, we're going to find ourselves in this situation where there's a temporary person or.
Well, there are two issues and two timeframes. You're absolutely right. We need to determine what we're doing with Sydney Harbour Tunnel before the end of August. We will get someone on board to assist with procurement. But when Western Harbour Tunnel is complete and we know it's actually being built, there'll be an opportunity for that provider to reconfirm their pricing for a longer term contract, the O N M contract for Western Harbour Tunnel. And there'll be a decision point whether we continue to go forward with them or not.
Do we have to increase, is there any chance we're increasing the toll on the Harbour Tunnel? So there's no competitive, so it has no competitive advantage as a crossing as opposed to the Western Harbour Tunnel?
You mean the Sydney Harbour Tunnel?
Yep.
That's not been contemplated to the best of my knowledge to date.
Is there any work being done as to whether or not the Harbour Tunnel toll should be removed? Is Transport currently preparing that as an option or modelling that or considering it in any way, shape or form?
So which, which tunnel?
The Harbour Tunnel.
It's not an option that I'm, that I'm across. And as I said, although the concession expires at the end of August, there are still costs associated with keeping this Sydney Harbour Tunnel working.
But we're not, Transport is not considering or undertaking any policy work to consider removing the toll from the Sydney Harbour Tunnel?
Not to my knowledge. Of course, there is the broader tolling review and a whole raft of options we looked at as part of that review.
And Ms. Drover, presumably you would know, wouldn't you? Miss Burke O'Neill or Mr. De Cost wouldn't, they're not the relevant people I should be directing these questions to. It would be you, would it not?
I suspect I would be across that. Ms. Burke O'Neill, who runs Greater Sydney, would also be across that.
Burke O'Neill, is there any work being done by Transport to model removing the toll from the Sydney Harbour Tunnel?
My answer is the same as my colleague's, Ms. Drover's. No, I'm not aware of any work going on to remove that toll.
My final question to both of you, is there any modelling underway as to whether or not to increase it whatsoever after 1 September this year?
I'm not aware of any specific modelling on that issue. But I can say, of course, there is that broad tolling review underway, which will look at a whole raft of issues and options, which addresses, you know, the terms of reference for that review, which is about affordability, fairness, et cetera, across the whole Sydney network.
And I know I said it was my final question, but it's my final question, part B. Is there any modelling that you're doing for the Western Harbour Tunnel that may result in the Sydney Harbour Tunnel price having to go up?
Look, at the moment, we're focused on procuring the Western Harbour Tunnel. We're in tender for package two, Western Harbour Tunnel. We've then got to build the tunnel, which is going to take many years. So the tolling won't come into play on Western Harbour Tunnel until the late 2020s, when Western Harbour Tunnel opens. So I think before that, the tolling review needs to occur. That's looking at the whole of the network pricing issues. So that's the first priority is actually to procure and get Western Harbour Tunnel built.
Pass to my colleague.
I just wanted to turn to one of the roads we haven't asked about, and that was the M5 corridor. The inquiry is likely to, we received a lot of evidence from that corridor around the impact of tolls, largely driven by the imposition of tolls on the M5 East after it had been free for 20 years and the fact that traffic has been driven off those toll roads onto suburban streets. That's having a big impact on local businesses and the committee's likely to look at, maybe even conducting a hearing out in that part of Sydney as a result, given the amount of feedback we've had. We're waiting on the study from Transport. It was due mid last year. That's what these businesses were holding out hope. But 12 months after that toll road opened, the new toll road opened out there, that have some answers. We still don't have that, as far as I'm aware. Where is this up to? What is the plan to get some answers to these local businesses who've got enormous trucks driving down their suburban streets?
Thanks, Mr. Graham. I'll answer that question or at least start the response for you. The review of the network, that's actually a planning condition. So put in place as part of approval for the M5 East tolling and the opening of the M8. This full road network performance plan is underway. It's a requirement to undertake it at 12 months of the opening of the new infrastructure. So we had, we started that process formally from mid 2021. But I just want to take a step back to say, on opening of the M8 and the tolling on the M5 East back in July 2020, there was some observation of increases in heavy vehicles on some of the surrounding road network, particularly Stony Creek Road and Forest Road were identified as, yes, having some significant increases in traffic. And Transport for New South Wales at that time did take some immediate actions to help ease some of that and the traffic flow. So clearways were implemented along both those corridors. There were some adjustments made to intersections and some work done as an initial response. I think the other factor in the first, well, actually the entire time of operation of the new M8 and this reform was this new infrastructure is that it's been operating during the stages of the pandemic, which has seen really variable traffic movements and changing travel patterns. So as of halfway through last year, at the 12-month mark, as we commenced this full network planning review, we hadn't really seen settled or anything like near normal traffic conditions. And that certainly continued in the next three or four months with the lockdown restrictions and stay-at-home orders associated with the Delta outbreak. So from about October, November last year, as restrictions started to ease, we've been progressing our data collection, undertaking some field survey traffic studies in the study area, looking at a number of intersections around different surrounding roads. This is pretty detailed work because I think it is with major new infrastructure opening on our network, which is complex, as we all know, you do see a lot of adjustments in how motorists are making their decisions between told and untold. And we certainly know there's been some traffic increases and changing movements in that area. So we've been putting together these survey studies and progressing that work over the summer period. Now, in accordance with the network performance plan review, we must go to councils for consultation. And there are four involved here, George's River Council, Bayside, Inner West and the City of Sydney councils will be part of this next phase of our work, once we're ready with some preliminary findings. And this is really essential because we'll have then, I think, some more reliable traffic data to share. But we really need to understand local network observations and the concerns they may want to impart to us from their local communities and their understanding of what might be needed. So we are prepared to do more if we see that there are some issues that need to be addressed. We have already taken some action and we are prepared to do more, but.
So when, when will that, when will that study, that's actually been very helpful information. When will that study be complete?
So we've committed to a mid 2022 sort of timeframe to submit our report to the Planning Minister. It's required to go to the Planning Minister, who will then consider it and that it's met the conditions of approval requirements and.
Ms. Burke O'Neill, I accept you have put accurately the timing requirements of the planning condition. But the problem you've got in putting that view is the government has been writing to people and giving them hope that this would be delivered in mid last year and it would provide some answers. What you're saying is those answers aren't coming at the earliest till mid 2022. I know that's not your fault, but that is the expectation there, but it's still a long way away, isn't it?
I understand the community will have concerns and views, as will councils, around what has been the traffic impact and how is the network connectivity working? And what I can say is that's why this work is really important and the consultation phase is critical for us. We aren't quite there yet. We expect to go to consultation in the coming weeks. As I said, we've been putting that analysis together and we will be moving pretty quickly, given the COVID delays, to actually get to a full report to submit to the Planning Minister mid-year. We've re-based lines that timeframe. We really want to hit that mid-year mark. And in addition to that, whilst we'll consult councils with what we think are the significance of the findings here, their views, if we determine there's more work to be done and there's mitigations and there's treatments needed on the road network.
I'd like, I'd like to hand to my colleagues, just in view of the time. Perhaps we'll come back to this in estimates, but just finally, if I can ask you, just to wrap this part up. In some, those clearways for local businesses have in some ways made it worse for them. Just means people are less likely to stop and use their custom. But you accept at the moment, don't you, I think this is right, for Stony Creek Road and Forest Road, there is still a real problem today. This hasn't gone away at the moment. Do you, is that the view from Transport? It's certainly the local view, but is that Transport's view?
Well, we'll know more once we've put our data analysis together, Ms. Graham. And I'm sorry, I can't answer that more fully today, but we know it has been an issue. It's been pretty difficult to assess that in nothing like near normal traffic conditions through the second half of last year. But so we're putting some work together and actually compiling this survey data at key intersections and locations to help us give a proper picture of that.
Thank you for that.
Yep.
Chair, I might hand back to either you or Mr. Mooki, whoever's aware of it.
I just wanted to ask one question, if I may. I'm not sure which of you is best to answer, so please just chip in. Um, I'm not sure um which of you is best to, to answer, so please just uh chip in. Um, I was speaking on the last panel to um Treasury reps about this document that was a, you know, market sounding um with Transurban in relation to Western Harbour Tunnel and Beaches Link. Um, and I'm not so much interested in the, the document itself and the, the topic of the discussion that you were having with Transurban, but more the um, the comments that were made during it. And in particular, um, the comment that said that um uh, Transport and Treasury were working on a tolling framework to consider toll reform across the harbour crossings, um noting that an equalised toll um system is likely to avoid traffic network distortions. But also there were other parts of that document, um, for instance, talking about the interface and network management issues with separate operators. Um, should the, the tunnel um be owned um by a different operator to the um, to the Western Harbour Tunnel, uh, if and when that gets um up and running and, and um a toll operator is appointed. Can you tell us what that toll reform um project looked like at that time? So that's back in uh November 2019, um, and what the conclusions of that were?
I'm happy to make some comments. Um, I'm not familiar with exactly what um, what the document is um, or what they're referring to. All, all I can say is there was a lot of market engagement with a broad range of stakeholders when we were looking at how we were going to procure Western Harbour Tunnel. So market engagement was undertaken with both um contractors that would build um the asset, um, potential future operators. Um, and in years prior, there was other engagement uh with financiers. Um, but that was some many years ago, um, pre 2017. I'm not, um, I'm not across what specifically was referred to. We, we need to have a look at the document. I don't obviously have it hand.
Thank you. And specifically, it states that you're working on a tolling framework um to, in order to, to consider how to equalise um, the, the, the tolls across the crossings. So if you could come back to us on notice with what that framework looked like um, and what that work involved, that would be incredibly useful. Um, did um, did you, um, Miss Burke O'Neill or, or Mr Decock have anything that you wanted to add on that?
Nothing to add.
Okay. Um, I'll throw back to Mr Graham for um final questions, if he has any.
I think Mr Mooki.
Me? Have, have time to share, sorry?
You've got four minutes, three minutes.
Right. Excellent. Um, just a couple of data points which would be helpful. Um, do we, Miss Drover, earlier you were describing the cap usage on the distance-based tolling regimes uh as well. Do you have a percentage of um the number of, uh, I guess, trips or cars or users, depending on how you keep the data, um, who benefit from that, those caps as a percentage of trip journeys?
Uh, I don't have that data. Um.
Do we actually collect it? Oh, like.
Uh, I'm, I'm not sure. Um, and I think the other thing to note is obviously Westconnex isn't finished. Um, the toll cap will really come into, to play.
Yeah, I appreciate.
Sections um there. So.
Yeah.
I don't know whether Mr Decock can comment on that. I know I don't have that data. I can confirm that.
Can we all take it on notice to see whether we can get an estimate as to the existing number of trips or um that exceed the cap? Or, sorry, that trigger the cap as a percentage of trip journeys? If it's possible, we can get any data on that. That would be useful.
We can take that on notice and see what we can bring back.
Thank you. Just equally as well, with the registration relief, presumably you do have figures on utilise, well, um, numbers of people who are eligible out of a potential pool. You have some figures on that, is that right?
Uh-huh. So I'll, I'll say, I'll take that question. Thank you. So uh, we provide the, the data uh from the city of our, our um customers and the other road operators provide their data. And Service New South Wales collects both of those pictures together uh to make a decision. So we've got part of the data, but not all of the data. As I mentioned before, we do provide that information uh on a regular basis to Service New South Wales.
So Service New South Wales would know by vehicle registration, the vehicles that are eligible for the relief, correct?
Yeah. So they, they collect the information from all the, all the operators and.
That's at the level of the vehicle registration, right? It's on the vehicle.
That's right. And if a, a customer has one account with multiple registrations and it reaches the threshold, the customer chooses which vehicles to apply the, the free registration to.
Do you keep data as to um the location of where those vehicles are registered, who are claiming it? Like if we wanted to find out across the city, who is benefiting and across the state for the matter, who is benefiting from that programme? Do you have that data by LGA, by, what, what is the level of analysis that you have as to that?
Uh, then I'll have to take it on notice what we have on, on, on that. Um.
If you have it on notice, can we get it broken down by LGA? That is the number of vehicles that are claiming registration relief by LGA or any other unit of geography that you keep?
I, I'm not sure we have that information, but I'll take it on notice to see what we can provide.
E-equally, um, do you know what percentage of car vehicles, uh, motor vehicles that are not heavy vehicles um that, uh, as a, are, are actually getting that relief? Is it 1%, 2%, 3%, 5%, 10%? How much people are actually benefiting from it?
Uh, yes. So, so we do know that about 200,000 people benefited uh from that relief uh last year.
People or cars?
These are uh cars, yes.
And how many cars are registered in New South Wales?
Uh, I will have to take on notice the exact number.
Okay. Um, thank you. Can we get the specific numbers of motor vehicles that are not heavy vehicles? Because heavy vehicles are not eligible to claim it, I presume. Um, so that have claimed the registration relief offer uh each year for the last, since its inception as a percent, and then equally as a percentage of all vehicle, motor vehicles registered that are eligible?
So um we, we can, I'll take it on notice to see what we can provide, uh, who, what the numbers of the vehicles that got uh toll relief from history. Uh, we can, we can see what we can provide there, yes.
Uh, thank you. And what was the cost of that last year?
Uh, that's a question uh probably best directed to Service New South Wales. I'm not aware of the, the cost.
Hasn't it come out of Transport's budget? You guys get the appropriation. Swear I read it in your annual report, not theirs.
I would, I'm not across that detail. I'll have to take that on notice.
Okay. Um, well, on notice, could you identify how much it is and now that you mention it, what budget it's coming from?
Yeah, I'll take that on notice.
Thank you. Chair, I think that's it for me.
Yes, fantastic. Uh, I was about to say, I think we've run out of time. Um, thank you very much to our witnesses um for spending their time with us this afternoon. Uh, there were questions taken on notice, so the Secretaryate will be in touch um to uh confirm what those were. Uh, and you'll have 21 days um to respond. So thank you very much. We're going to take a 15-minute break. We'll be back at three o'clock with representatives from Transurban. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Um, and good afternoon uh to both of you. Thank you um for coming and giving evidence to this inquiry for a second time. Um, before we get started, if I could just swear you in, sort of, oh, no, you don't need to be sworn in because you've already appeared. That makes it super easy. Um, so I will just check with the opposition members as to which one of them is going to commence questioning. And it's Mr Graham.
Click off. Thank you.
Oh, sorry.
I'm sorry, Chair. Were, were we going to be given the opportunity to make a brief opening statement?
Yes, I was just about to say that. I'm sorry. It's the second time I've done it today. Um, if you could, please deliver your opening statement. Thank you.
Yes, and I can assure you, Chair, it will be very short. Thank you very much for the opportunity for Michelle and I to appear today. We just wanted to uh mention that on behalf of Transurban and Westconnex, we would like to acknowledge the traditional owners of the land on which we meet today and to pay our respects to their elders, past, present and emerging. Uh, Westconnex is a key part of the inquiry's terms of reference. In the next 18 months, the final pieces of the puzzle will come together to create Australia's largest road infrastructure project. In March 2023, or thereabouts, the M four, M five link will open. And shortly after that, the Roselli to change will also open. If I go to the M four, M five link, it will reveal its role in connecting Sydney when it opens. Excavation is already complete. The mechanical and electrical fit out of the tunnel is 60% complete. And 10,500 jobs have been created as that work has been undertaken. 40% of those jobs have been created for people in Western Sydney. Over the life of the Westconnex project, some 40,000 jobs have been created and 500 apprenticeships have been achieved. We would like to thank all the people for their dedication and resilience over the whole project, but most particularly their efforts and resilience over the course of the last year or so. Westconnex is and will continue to transform communities. Already an hour is being saved on the M four and 30 minutes on a trip along the M five. I mentioned last time that it's 40% safer in some parts of Westconnex and Parramatta Road is experiencing 15% better air quality. In addition to that, when Westconnex is complete, we will see some 18 hectares of open space and parks opened across Western Sydney. And alongside that, a number of urban sculptures and urban artworks. We'll also be building and opening 23 kilometres of new and improved pedestrian and bike paths. So again, just to close the opening statement, I'd like to thank you on behalf of Michelle for inviting us and we hope that we can answer the questions that you have coming up.
Thank you very much. Now over to you, Mr Graham.
Great. Thank you, Chair, and thanks uh to the Transurban witnesses for uh coming back again. I think essentially you're here, given your centrality to the um operations of these roads across Sydney. I might first give you the opportunity, now we've questioned the agencies in detail, was there anything from this morning's session that you'd like the chance to respond to specifically?
I think we're in your hands, Mr Graham.
Thank you. First question then, a very detailed one, Mr Head, just on that M four, M five link. What is your estimation of the approximate opening time here?
Uh, we're currently targeting uh March 2023, which is the contract completion date. It might be a little bit earlier, it might be a little bit later, subject to COVID-19 impacting productivity. At this stage, that's our best guidance.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, just turning to the question that we've dealt with a little bit over the course of the day, and that's the um potential for the sort of decision signage, which has been trialled in Melbourne, to be used in Sydney. Uh, but also not just with the potential travel time savings, but also potentially current toll prices uh for drivers, really giving them the choice about the cost and the benefit as they move around Sydney. Uh, as the uh operator of many of those toll roads, is this something you can live with? What can you tell us about the Victorian trial?
So, Mr Graham, perhaps I'll, I'll take that um question on. Uh, as we've shared in our submission, which was provided to the committee last year, uh, decision signage is definitely something that we would be supportive of as a concept. And we would be very happy to work with policymakers and relevant stakeholders to have that implemented. As you mentioned, there has been a trial that uh was undertaken or is still underway in Victoria looking at similar types of decision signages that showed travel time on a toll road as compared to a free alternative, so that road users can make their own decision real time on which path to take. Uh, it could provide information that road users have in, in terms of deciding how much travel time benefits, which route is the best for them, uh, but also be notified if there's an incident or there's a disruption on some of the, the network so that they can make adjustments to their travel plans. It is definitely something that we would be happy to uh undertake a trial on and work with the relevant stakeholders and agencies to explore the, the relevance of that in Sydney, obviously taking into account every road and every situation is different to make sure that we don't um compromise on road safety and all the other really important aspects as well.
Yeah, there are, there's some operational questions that arise, particularly for distance-based tolling or for um certain physical locations. Uh, the deputy president, uh, very initially, initially somewhat dismissive of, of this idea. I mean, I've, I've supported it um today because I think it's good for drivers. But from a Transurban point of view, it's not especially to your benefit, but it would resolve some confusion, uh, I imagine for, for uh drivers as they move around the network.
Well, I, I think we would think about decision signage physically on the road as only one of many different options to put real-time information in the hands of the drivers. Uh, we may have shared that in our earlier uh appearances last year in front of the committee. Um, but certainly we're partnering with technology service providers such as Google, who provide a lot of real-time navigation tools. Uh, but also investing in our own trip compare tools, such as on our linked website, where customers or all road users can actually um access real-time information, uh, putting in their origin information and then their destination, so that we can actually provide using independent data on the different told and untold routes that are available. So those are online and technologically enabled options. We want to also uh explore physical signage as another alternative for, for road users.
Unless in Victoria, this has been popular with drivers, uh, can you give us any other feedback from the Victorian trial?
Yeah, the, I mean, the trial is still underway, so we would want to um make sure that we get the, the full comprehensive picture before we come back. But as you mentioned, the feedback from um, from the, some of the respondents that we have surveyed have provided us with some positive feedback on uh one, how well they have used the signs, but also their intent to use that sign should it be available going forward. Um, important to mention.
And that, that, just to be clear though, that, that trial doesn't um include the actual cost of tolls, but you see no barrier to that being included in a New South Wales trial. You'd be open to that discussion.
Very much so. And on some of our existing uh toll roads, there are also information that are already displayed um around toll pricing. Um, but obviously, those, as we talked about, are very specific to each asset.
Yeah, thank you. I might turn to the questions around tolling reform. And we've had more detail today about the government reviewing to um uh tolling. We know more about the timeline, more about what's in scope and, and uh not in scope. A lot of things are in scope. Uh, we know who's around the table. Uh, there are all things that we know for the first time. We haven't had that position put in public officially uh by the government, certainly not in the detail that we've heard uh today. Having heard those things, um, the evidence that's been put to us is really up till now, there hasn't been engagement on these questions formally with Transurban State. Um, I'll just confirm that's also your understanding at, at your end.
That's correct, Mr Graham.
And looking at the, uh, we've talked about a range of reforms that might be considered. Um, is Transurban in favour or against some of the particular reforms? I won't put the list to you. Uh, are there some of those that you uh would like to see or you're advocating for as the committee looks at potential solutions to uh just the burden that people are facing in Sydney with tolls?
The position that we shared with the committee at the end of last year remains the same uh as the one that we're in, which is Transurban remains open uh and willing to have a dialogue with the relevant policymakers um and also departments or relevant stakeholders in exploring how we can improve and enhance uh the benefits that we can deliver uh to Sydney-siders. So we haven't ruled out or ruled in any specific solutions and looking to, to have the opportunity to engage.
Have you modelled the impact of any of these specific tolling relief solutions?
No, we haven't, Mr Graham. And I think uh a little bit depends on what are the objectives and also the, the options that are on the table. Uh, as you're aware, we haven't had any conversations directly about specific options or specific solutions. So rather than trying to model um a, a considerable number of options, we would prefer to have the opportunity, should one be available for us to engage, so that we can better understand objectives, levers, options, solutions, so that we can do the, the, do the proper work on it. Because as you would, as the committee would appreciate, some of these solutions are quite complex and it does take into account quite a number of factors that need to be modelled carefully.
So, so really you need the government agencies conducting this review to get their um options in order uh to be able to put those to you, so you can do some of that model. And that's important. I do that looking at the public interest first before those discussions. I can see why they might want to do it in that order. But until we get to that point where there's discussions with you, modelling perhaps at your end, uh, we won't be at the serious end of this discussion. Is that a fair comment?
Yeah, that, that would be the, the right summary. Uh, I, I think from our perspective, we support good transport policy. And so if that's where we should logically start, then I think we're looking for a bit more guidance uh from policymakers and, and government to see where, where we want to head from there. But very happy to. But very happy to support where we can.
Thank you. The final issue I want to ask about is the, before I then hand over, is this question I was asking of Treasury about the total toll cost that relates, that, that drivers are already signed up for under existing contracts. And I want to be clear in putting this question to Transurban, this is not a Transurban question. This, I said, this is actually much more a government question. Government's got a range of contracts. Some of these roads are not operated by Transurban. There's certainly a range of other companies who own bits of these. So it's a broader question, but you do operate many of these roads. This is also not about your bottom line. You've got other costs, costs of finance, cost to operate. My question though is, how much are drivers paying in tolls in total under these contracts? I want to know what's coming out of the driver's pocket. How much are we actually signed up to pay by the time these contracts end? We touched on this in the last hearing. Is there anything you want to add to what you said last time?
That's right, Mr Graham, and we did touch on this topic last time. As an Australian publicly listed company, we are somewhat prohibited and limited in terms of providing long-range forecasts. And I think to properly answer the question that you have provided, we would need to be able to provide the information, which we are limited to do. Having said that, thinking about how to get to an answer, there would be a number of factors and a number of variables that need to be taken into account. And so as the committee would be, would be aware, I think in our past conversations, even with the tolling regime having been set at the start of the concession and being set for the life of the concession, there are also other factors such as inflation rate for some of these long-dated concessions, which will extend multiple decades. Traffic growth, which is dependent very much on a number of drivers around population, economic factors. And then of course, interest rate, which plays a big role in the discounting of future cash flow back to the present value. To be able to answer your question accurately and very small tweaks, very small changes to some of these factors over a long time, because some of these concessions are quite long-dated, for example, Westconnex up to twenty sixty, would have a big impact on the total number at the end. And as you mentioned, from our perspective, the, the revenue line is only one part of the picture. It doesn't take into account the upfront capital, the ongoing operations maintenance costs, and then of course, the risk that's taken in private sector, putting capital in upfront in the investment. So not to avoid your question, but I think it's perhaps putting in context some of the challenges and thinking about how to answer that.
Yeah, look, I, I, that's a helpful answer, and I think there are some bits of this puzzle you can colour in. In fact, the Transurban reporting to the market is much more detailed than the information we get from the Treasury. And I was quite disappointed with the answers from Treasury today on this question. So I do see it as more an issue for government to be upfront with drivers about that. However, I do want to put to you the position I put to the Treasury, which is it's not that complicated a, an assessment. You've run through some of the key variables here which shape this. The prices are set in these contracts. They could go higher often, but the prices, toll prices are set. Inflation is a pretty standard assumption that government uses in the budget for that of two and a half percent. That was what was used in the Westconnex business model. On traffic growth, there is one of the key variables we've seen over time. But assuming a very low level of traffic, traffic growth of say, two and a half percent. In fact, your traffic growth has been higher over time. And on the interest rate question, again, in government, there's a pretty standard discount rate that's applied across the board, some others for sensitivity analysis, but those are questions government has to tackle all the time. Using those basic assumptions, the very conservative ones, traffic growth of two and a half percent, the standard inflation of two and a half percent, looking at this in today's prices for contracts that have already been signed up. So we're not counting the Western Harbour Tunnel, the M six, Stage One, the Beaches Link, none of those are in, they're coming down the line. They'll increase the toll prices. Already, we're signed up for over a hundred billion dollars in today's dollars. In fact, a hundred and fifteen billion dollars, a conservative estimate. It will be higher, it will be higher, but it won't be lower than that amount. Is there anything about that, those set of assumptions, you've already answered this in some ways, but anything about those assumptions or any caveats you'd like to put on the table when we look at that question? That Treasury should answer, but just won't answer.
I think the methodology, Mr Graham, that you've laid out makes sense at a high level. If we look at the last few years, even in the, the area of traffic growth, which is one of the key assumptions that go into the long-term forecast. A pandemic like COVID has created considerable disruptions to what otherwise we could consider to be a very consistent and predictable way of looking at it. And the, the COVID situation has given us an example of what kind of disruptions could come. And without giving the committee too much detail, I think as an example, at the peak of, at the peak of COVID, when we first experienced it back in twenty twenty, everyone saw cars disappeared off the roads, everyone was in restrictions. So these are not just a tweaking of two point five going into two point four percent type. It's quite dramatic disruptions to regular travel and regular movement patterns. And so those would be things that we would be challenged in thinking about how to actually model and how to put into a long-range forecast, especially when we-
Yeah, look, I think that's a really good example of some of the uncertainties here. Although driving in this morning, I can assure you that COVID's led to more people on the road, not less. At the moment, and if COVID's not over by twenty sixty, we're all in a lot more trouble. So, yeah, I should be explicit for those are assumptions, that's smooth the COVID impact out of these. They, you know, given the length of these contracts, hopefully that's a short-term impact, although its impacts are quite uncertain, given the experience we've had on the road.
Mr Graham, I might just add one other bit of context for you. You asked about the two and a half percent for traffic growth long-term and whether that was reasonable. I might just draw the committee's attention to question on notice number three, where we provided the traffic history in relation to the M two. So I don't expect you to have it at hand, but in two thousand and nine, the M two grew at one point two percent. In two thousand and ten, it grew at one point eight percent, and then in two thousand and eleven, it grew at zero point three percent. That, that shows you that that asset matured after it had been open for about ten years. So it opened in nineteen ninety-six and we're looking at two thousand and ten, two thousand and eleven. So as the assets mature, a two and a half percent traffic growth rate would be a fairly strong rate of growth. I'm not saying it's impossible, but that's just some more context for you to consider when you're trying to do your calculations.
Yeah, look, and I think that's a very fair point, Mr Head. And I, I think you would also concede that the growth on the Westconnex assets in Sydney at the moment on the traffic growth front is four percent, not two and a half percent. Obviously, COVID is having a real impact as Monsieur indicated. And that, yeah, there's certainly some, some real detail here in that traffic number.
Yeah, that, I mean, that, that is one of the big risks embedded in that calculation, along with the discount rate. And yes, the Westconnex assets are growing at a higher rate than two and a half percent, but they're very young. So the tunnels have just opened. You would expect them to be growing at a higher rate, but as they matured, when about the M two, you end up with a much lower growth rate than the one that perhaps you might be assuming.
Depending on population, as you've already observed.
Oh, and, and just capacity of the asset. So the assets end up getting a bit more congested, and unless you expand them, the traffic growth, growth does come right down.
At that point, I'm going to hand to my colleagues.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair, and greetings. Nice to see you. I might just, in the limited time before we pass to the Chair, just a couple of clarification questions. Mr Head, I think I heard you say that the M four, M five is due to open in March twenty-three. Can I ask, have you or the contractors made any claims and modification requests to the transport for New South Wales in respect to the M four and M five link?
Nothing of any materiality. There might be small things that have not come across my desk, but nothing that is large enough to, 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 to bear mention. I can't speak for Transport for New South Wales, but I think I would have heard about that too.
Okay, sure. No, it's just that we were, there, there are certain disclosures that are made on the transport side. I just wanted to understand how much of that might be coming from the M four, M five link, but fair enough. Secondly, in, in respect to the toll reform questions that my colleague was asking about Transurban's willingness to engage, I presume your position hasn't changed in that obviously Transurban can't find it and it's find itself in a position where it's worse off or volunteer to find itself in a position where it's worse off than otherwise would be under the existing concession arrangements. That's a fair principle?
That's a principle that we've stated before. And just to give that a little more context, we're a listed company made up largely of super interest investors.
And that's because you have directors, and if they were to agree knowingly, agree to anything that leaves them worse off, would find themselves facing a myriad of actions. That's fair, right? You, you have no legal opportunity to agree to anything that leaves you worse off, your shareholders. That's fair?
Well, our, our role is to try and balance all of the stakeholders. That includes customers, it includes community, but it also includes investors. So we would need to put together something that made sense for all of those investors, take it to the board of Transurban, and they would ultimately find out whether it made sense for all of those stakeholders.
I, I put it to the Treasury this morning that the way in which the contract concessions work is that compensation clauses are triggered if an act, for whatever the term, very simple, because it's quite a complex contract. But basically, if the concession holders find themselves in a position where as a result of changes made to the contract, you receive less than you would in the base case financial model, that's when the compensation clauses are triggered. That's your understanding as to how the concession works, is it not?
It depends on the specific example and the specific impact, but that is one of the common ways of assessing the answer to your question.
Yes, okay, thank you. And just in respect, the other question that I had, that I was hoping that you could either provide us the information on now or on notice, if you've got a data specific. I asked Transport whether or not they know, they knew the number, the percentage of journeys that exceeded the cap as a percentage, and therefore of all journeys taken for Westconnex. Do you have that data?
It, it's, it's not possible to exceed the cap just yet, Mr Mokey. So when the M four, M five link comes on board, we will then be able to offer customers a trip length that enables them to hit the cap, which is just over sixteen kilometres. And only then would we know the answer to that question.
But you have a model, don't you, or a forecast?
We do have a forecast, but I would be reluctant to provide that to the committee.
Don't worry. I accept that you probably have stronger grounds to refuse that question than the government does, and given that they weren't, that's fair enough. I think my time has expired, Chair.
Thank you, Mr Mokey. So I think I'd like to start off on the issue of the admin fees, and thank you very much for providing your answers to questions on notice in relation to this. I think we're all a little bit wiser than we were a month ago on this, but still, or two months ago now, but we're still not quite getting there. So from what I understand, very helpfully from your responses, is that we have the government or Transport for New South Wales being the one who actually sends out the notices of tolls not paid, so the penalty notices, we'll call them. Could you please tell me how much you pay to Transport for New South Wales for them to perform that service?
Chair, I think that's a, a question that if we have the opportunity, we'd like to take on notice and come back to the committee on that. Because that would form part of the overall operations when it comes to managing what we call non-arranged travel, which are a small percentage of the customers that do not have a retail account, but I'll come back to you on that.
Yeah, okay. I was hoping you might have investigated that as part of the putting together of the, the answers to the question on notice. Because I think it goes to this assertion around the other part of the cost to Transurban of collecting the unpaid tolls. So if we could just take a step back, you've provided to us evidence in your answers to questions on notice that you have forty full-time positions who are basically employed license plate checking in order to match non-customers, so the number plates of non-customers with the particular number plate. Is that what that is? Could you elaborate, please, on what those people actually do?
Sure, Chair, if I could maybe perhaps bring you back one, one step before that. Pre-COVID, we were looking at supporting about a million trips across our Sydney network every day. So there's a, a fair amount of volume of transactions that come through to us by majority. And we're very happy to say that our customers and the trips are undertaken without any interference, any manual handling. And our customers travel on our roads without having to incur any fees. And so that we remain focused on and making sure that ninety-five percent of those customers of our customers do travel without fees and without having, having any manual processing required.
We, sorry, just with respect, we went through all of that last time. If we could try to just focus on the answer to the question, that'd be really useful.
And on certain occasions, not necessarily limited to customers that do not have tags. Sometimes our tolling equipment, because of inclement weather, because of sun glare, whatever is some of the external factors that need to be taken into account, the tag reading didn't work or the image didn't quite come through for our system to automatically read, and that's what was involved in the manual processing. So that's the, the team of-
Okay, so that's not necessarily, that's the license matching fee?
That's the work that we need to do to match fees and, and so for an existing retail customer of ours, there will be occasions where they have travelled and, for example, if their tag has run out of battery or it wasn't installed, we are still able to manually process that so that they can avoid receiving a toll notice.
Absolutely. And I've received those myself, and I would expect that. And it's a, you know, a small fee that you can get waived in certain circumstances. That's all great. So that's what those forty people are doing. They are unrelated then to collecting debts.
That's right. So that's all part of our operations. And then I think, Chair, if you were, if you want us to focus on the administration processes, that applies to customers out of not the ninety-five percent that travel without having to incur fees or involved in the toll notice processes, these are the ones that either choose not to have an arrangement or for whatever reason they, no, they can't. And, and so those are the ones that do go through that toll notice period. And in the supplementary responses that we provided to the committee, we provided some also high-level volume information. So out of all those customers, seventy-seven percent of them don't end up paying the administration fee because through contacts, through proactive discussions that we have with them, we were able to actually resolve the issue, they're putting them back into a product that is more suitable for them, such as setting up a retail account, in which case-
Sorry, we're, we're straying into a different area. I'm not, we're not talking, we talked last time about the percentages of people. What we're talking about here is how much it costs Transurban to actually go to collect the tolls that aren't these, the people who already have accounts, but the people who are incurring that ten dollar administration fee. In terms of the costs that it, it actually costs to Transurban, the matching fee, the matching happens anyway. The, because that happens for your normal customers, sorry, for your pain, for, for your customers, shall we say. We know now that the New South Wales Transport is sending out the actual notices. So what's the ten dollars for?
Yeah, so if we think about the process, the toll notices or the, the toll notice process is only one element of the full process. There's also proactive contact that we make with the customer, the follow-up that we have, and then where it applies, where we have service providers that help us get in contact with the customers and try and collect the unpaid amounts, and then all the technology and the information that supports that. So I think if I could reiterate to the committee, by regulation, Transurban is not able to make any profit, any money out of any of the fees that we charge, and this includes-
Again, that's, that's not my focus. My focus, as you, you may not believe it, is not on you and your profits. It's on the people who are suffering hardship from getting these admin fees and doing what I can to reduce those admin fees. Now, because there is an obligation, or there's at least a notional obligation for Transport or whoever to set the admin fees in line with the actual cost, I'm trying to get to the bottom of what the actual cost is. Now, it appears to me that the ten dollar admin fee, which has been set as you helpfully- which has been set as you helpfully informed us in the answers in two thousand and one, before we had a whole host of the, you know, a whole lot of the technology we now have, that ten dollars hasn't moved, that ten dollars is causing a lot of people a lot of stress. It appears to me that the amount that you spend actually your bit of recovering those unpaid tolls is a fraction of that. And in response, you've given me an answer on notice that refers to not just those direct costs, but also a whole bunch of overheads and infrastructure that would apply to your ordinary business. So were you able to go back after our last discussion and isolate the actual costs involved of that that actual collecting that bit of debt?
I think, Chair, we'll have to come back to you and have another have another attempt at providing the information that the committee is seeking.
Thank you. That would be very useful. I would also just like to ask you a question about in your answers, you do talk about if somebody gets an administration fee, very helpfully, if they get an administration fee, ten dollars or twenty dollars, it can be reduced if they then go and open an account, which is good for those people who just hadn't, you know, they drove on the road for the first time, they didn't really know. What does Transurban do that's sort of similar, I guess, or is there a similar process? For those people who, for example, don't have a credit card because they're not financially independent, what can those people do to reduce that debt?
So I think we're we're well aligned in wanting to make sure that customers get what service they have. We would prefer none of our customers pay any fees, and so we've worked very hard to make sure that there are products and services that are fee-free. And so as an example, I think to your, to the example that you've raised, Chair, around customers that are not able to provide credit card details, there are also other payment methods that we would be happy to provide options for for our customers. And so
They, sorry, what are they and are they reduced? Will you get the same reduction? So if they if they come and say, look, I don't have a credit card, so I can't set up an account with a a credit card?
So we are able to, yep, we are able to provide a direct debit arrangement, which is through a without verging into details, that's beyond my responsibility. And direct debit, which is a non-credit card type options, which is still a payment option, those wouldn't attract the typical credit card surcharges. So those would be the kind of fee-free options that we would we would have.
Concerns not around fee-free. I think you'll remember from last time, there's a lot of of women in particular who are in abusive relationships who don't have bank accounts of their own, or they don't have credit cards, and I'm wondering how that fits in with this. And do you offer some other sort of process for people who have neither of those things?
So for our customers and our travellers that are in financial hardship or other types of hardship, we do have a linked assist, which is a dedicated service that we provide to help the customers address, and it's not just financial hardship, it's whatever other the broader challenges, because we appreciate that a lot of customers are dealing with things that is more than just financial. And it is a a service that we provide for free, it is a service that we also partner with other organisations that are expert in these areas, such as Good Shepherd, that can provide other help as well, such as temporary accommodation, some of the others that you could I could only imagine would hopefully be valuable for for those that need it. And these are the support mechanisms are available should our customers need them.
Could I just perhaps try and add a little bit to that? So through that hardship programme, we have specialist people who sit down and listen and talk to our customers' individual wants and needs and concerns and constraints. More often than not, I think it's fair to say, we come up with a sensible way forward. And if I refer you to our question on notice number seven, it's really only the people who we can't resolve in a rational and sensible way, working together, take into account all the things that you referred to, that end up in the final stage of the process, which is the legal proceeding. And they are very few. There have been no new cases over the last few years. And as you can see from our answer, the third last paragraph talks about the fact that three hundred cases were resolved even after they went into that last stage. So we do everything as an organisation through our hardship programme to deal with the people that you're talking about in a sensible and compassionate way.
What percentage of those cases that are resolved ahead of going to court are resolved by collecting the toll but waiving the admin fees?
We, as Michelle said, we'll provide you with some more detailed data in relation to these matters, because we are getting right down into very small percentages and small numbers of people, but we're happy to provide that on notice.
Thank you. Would Transurban be happy if the admin fee was scrapped entirely and instead was collected as a sort of something different, I guess, by Transport for New South Wales, so that there was no element of the admin fee going to Transurban? Would that reform be satisfactory for you?
I'm I'm not sure we're able to say yes or no to policy suggestions that are put to us, you know, real time. But as we said with most things, we're as an organisation, we're open to to discuss alternative ways. And so if something's put to us that you think is better, happy to entertain it.
So the idea would be that Transport for New South Wales would would issue the penalty notices as they do now with an admin fee attached. But what would come back to Transurban eventually would be the unpaid toll without any admin fee?
No, I understand what you're proposing. I'd just like to sort of see the detail before we comment specifically on the likelihood of us adopting it.
Sure, but but presumably the admin fees aren't a large part of your your revenue.
As as Michelle and I have said all the way along, we are not in the business of collecting admin fees. That's that's not what we want to be doing. We want to work with customers to make it as an easier process as it possibly can be.
So in principle, then, if the government took back responsibility for the enforcement of people paying tolls, and you were still made whole in terms of the tolls that you received, then you would be content with that?
I'll just reiterate my earlier answer. We're happy to engage, but I'm a little bit reluctant to say specifically, having heard it for the first time only a moment ago, our willingness to adopt it on the fly. I don't think that would be prudent on behalf of our organisation.
Okay, thank you. I might progress that separately. I will go back to, is it Mr. Mooki?
Certainly is, thank you. I just wanted to ask a couple of questions about some others that arose with Treasury, which I think is best directed to you, Mr. Head. Mr. Head, did you, did West Connects return capital to its shareholders, he would call it, or investors or owners, which included Ripple? Roads retain interest proprietary limit in financial year twenty twenty-one, did it not?
It did.
And what was the amount of capital it returned?
Just looking it up for you. Uh, it was, um, there with me, just over one point three billion.
You returned a billion dollars worth of capital?
One point three was the total dividend and the, oh, look, proceeds from re-gearing, which is effect, in effect, a return of capital was just over a billion dollars.
Okay, hang on, let me just unpack that for a minute, please. We're talking in financial year twenty twenty-one, are we not?
That's correct.
So it's just one point three billion in that year?
Yes.
And one billion of it was a capital return, did you say?
Yeah, so effectively we put a new debt facility in place and returned that capital.
Get to that, just the number that was capital, the number that was dividends?
Well, I I might reclassify your question so that I know that I'm giving you the right answer. Proceeds from re-gearing, so from a new debt facility, it's just over a billion dollars.
Yep.
And the and the balance was from revenue and tolls.
Retained earnings.
In the toll rub world, I'll just go with my language so that I know that I'm giving you the correct.
Fair enough. All right, so that three hundred million dollars of revenue was returned, and one billion-ish was returned as a result of a re-gearing facility. Okay, thank you, and thank you. That's very helpful. Secondly, can I ask, did you, I mean, just in terms of the West Connects dividend policy that prevailed, I guess, look, not from this year, right? Firstly, you settled on the forty-nine percent interest, have you not? You own it now?
Sydney Transport Partners.
Sydney Transport Partners, which
That settled like last year?
Right.
Congratulations on on your new fund asset. But so can I just ask you on the policy that applied whilst prior to settlement, because I don't think it's fair for me to potentially push you, what happens beyond. But prior to settlement, was West Connects paying dividends?
Yes, I just answered that in the earlier question.
Yes, and were you paying dividends in which years, financial years going back since opening?
Can I take that on notice? I don't want to give you the incorrect answer.
Sure, but we have three hundred million dollars in twenty twenty twenty-one. Do you have the figure for nineteen twenty by any chance?
Not at hand, but I can take it on notice.
Okay, and let's just be clear, you're paying that to Ripple directly, right? It is not going anywhere else.
Well, I gave you a total number, and forty-nine percent of that was to go to Ripple.
Okay, right, that's key. That's forty-nine percent of it. Got it. Yep, thank you. Uh, fair enough. I think that's it for me. I'll pass back to my colleague.
I just might follow up with a brief question on that administration charge, which was that under questioning, Transport were prepared to support a review of that administration charge, that ten dollars, which I thought was welcome and is gives the committee some encouragement to make a recommendation on that matter. I might just check, we discussed this last hearing, but I might just check Transurban's view that you also would welcome a review of that ten-dollar or occasionally twenty-dollar charge.
Absolutely, Ms. Rome. We have said in our submission that we would be open to engage on any reformed topic. We don't have any any particular options or solutions that we have closed out. In fact, in our submission, we've also included a few more things that goes beyond just the fee levels, such as consolidating toll notices, which at the moment are specific to each concession in the spirit of looking at a better customer experience and a customer outcome.
Yeah, no, good. So thanks for your evidence on the first point. I think that clears the committee to recommend in that space on the multiple toll notices. Again, Transport, I think we're happy to have this reviewed, and I think that's welcome from a committee point of view. Having, I I did find their evidence slightly confusing about what the hurdle here was, other than the late twentieth century operating system, which is sitting in the Transport Office is clearly part of the issue here. But did you, can I ask you to reflect specifically on their evidence about why we can't do this immediately? Is there anything else you can add to this picture? If the committee, essentially, I think, is very open to the view that this should happen tomorrow if possible?
We were worried that the Transport Department did appear in front of the committee, but I think it would be inappropriate for us to make comments on what the department has provided to the committee. I think from Transurban's perspective, once again, it's a rating that we would be open to any dialogue, any engagement around how we can improve the customer's experience. Some of the immediate factors that come into play, of course, for us would be making sure that the information flow and the technology systems do support that. The other element that is also very important and top of mind for us is customer information protection and privacy, so making sure that whatever other processes that we're looking to enhance doesn't breach and compromise any of those protections that are in play. So happy to engage and happy to explore any options that would give us a better outcome for the customers.
Great, thank you. And yeah, so so again, just to be very specific on that, your, if if the committee recommends that that should take place or should be reviewed immediately, that causes you no heartache as you make clear in your submission then today?
That's right, Mr. Rome.
Okay, Chair, I think I'm in a position, given that we've called these witnesses back, I've covered most of the ground I need to today with these witnesses, so I'm happy to hand back to you or to to Mr. Mooki.
Mr. Mooki, have you got any other questions?
Yes, I think I only have one other data request that I have. I I'm tempted to ask for your long-range forecast spread, venture, Miss Hui, because it sounded pretty exciting for Excel nerds, but I'll I'll save that. And just instead ask, you keep data on number of trips by toll account, by tag account, do you, or?
I'll probably need to come back to the committee with exactly what information we keep, but certainly from a a customer account perspective, we do provide our toll account customers with information on individual trips so that they can they can do where is relevant for them.
Look, we ask this of Transport for the tag that they control as well, but just on your counterpart, would you provide that information to Service New South Wales for the purposes of calculating toll relief, don't you? Registration, sorry.
Yes, so in terms of the registration relief, we've provided some also clarification information in our responses. That information is provided to Service New South Wales, so that Service New South Wales can undertake whatever calculation and and assessment they need for eligibility for registration relief, which is a government initiative. And so that information we provide in accordance with the
Yeah, look, the bit that I'm really interested in across the whole network, which I think would assist us as we kind of look at the options as well, is more of a decile-style analysis, that is, the number of trips taken by each decile across the whole network. That's the type of data which allows us to actually start to look at, I guess, wider issues around distribution of toll relief. Do you have any data like that, or is it possible that we could get? Obviously, it's de-anonymised with a decile analysis, but we're really only looking at the percentage of trips that are taken within each decile, would be as a percentage of all trips across the network for a period of time, which I accept is COVID-distorted right now.
Yes. So in our submission, we've provided some segment breakdown in terms of geography and and spend data, which is based on our customer, which is not the full picture. And then at a good level, we continue to provide information around vehicle, trips and volume, which is on a fifteen-minute basis at the asset level.
It's the accounts, which is slightly separate to the vehicles as well. If there's any information you can give us on that on notice, that would be most useful.
Sure, we'll take that away and have a look at that. Obviously, at the very, very fine end of the tail, then we're getting into very individual customer information that we want to make sure that we protect.
So it's at least ten percent of your customers are mixed with each other, but I accept your point.
But we'll definitely come back to the committee with information, noting that we only have a portion of the full
Yeah, of course you do.
Road user base.
Yeah, that's it for me, Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Mooki. I've just got a couple of additional questions, just again on the admin fees. Just to clarify, if you were to choose to reduce that admin fee or to waive it or to perhaps offer a discount on it, different to what you've been doing already, would you require Transport for New South Wales's permission in any way?
Chair, I think the the way that I would respond to your question is out of the the customer transactions that we have seen recently, and we included some information in our responses, seventy-seven percent of our customers that receive the toll notice, i.e. the admin fee, don't end up paying it. So I think from that, that's a roundabout way for me to answer the question that we do actually waive that, because seventy-seven percent of the customers that receive a toll notice don't end up paying that and they end up being taken care of in other ways through that manual debit process, which significantly reduce their fees. But if you're referring to a an overall fee structure, i.e. revisiting the the administration fee, perhaps I'm better to take some advice and make sure that I come back to the committee with the most accurate information. But I think what I shared with the committee last time was it would be an industry-wide effort that would involve engagement with with Transport as a department.
Thank you. So just to be clear, the question then is, is there anything under contract or regulation that would require Transurban to seek consent from Transport for New South Wales or or another government entity before deciding to waive or discount any of that admin fee amount?
So Chair, if I, yeah, so if I can come back to the committee to make sure that I answer the question accurately, I think waiving it on an individual customer basis, we already do that for seventy-seven percent of the the customers that receive it. But I think you're referring to the fee structure as a whole, in which case I do need to come back and make sure.
Sure, and and when you say waive the seventy-seven percent Understand, a- and when you say waive the seventy seven percent waived, is the seventy seven percent waived or is it discounted because they get a toll account? What's that seventy seven percent? Is that people who haven't got a toll account and aren't convinced to put one in place? Uh, then you've waived?
So there will be a range of different circumstances. I think some of the customers already have um toll accounts, whether it's with linked, i.e. with Transurban or with um with another toll provider, um, but for the reason their account is not active or it's out of, whatever is the whatever is the reason. So there's an ability for us to exchange the admin fee to put the toll onto a toll account um for processing fee, which still reflects the the cost of taking the phone call or doing the processing, whatever it is that is needed, which is um by majority a dollar ten uh compared to the ten dollar admin fee. And then there will be other customers that don't have an existing account and we can work with them to set up a product that is more suitable for them um in in those cases as well.
And is that one dollar ten per toll notice?
I believe so, but let me come back to the committee to confirm.
And if so, and I believe it is as well, in that case, presumably is within Transurban's power to amalgamate that that amount? If you're only making one phone call to someone who has ten toll notices outstanding, presumably uh there is no, not, you know, it's not ten times the amount of cost um to speak to them about those ten uh toll notices as opposed to one. So do you have a a policy for amalgamating at that point?
I think as as we covered earlier with the committee, we do have a broader practice around helping customers get out of financial trouble, get out of um burdens that they would have, which is, which could be beyond the the toll spend that we have in our sights. And so we do have ability and we do do the practice of helping customers through waiving fees or suspending or delaying fees and and helping them with payment um schedules and and the like. But I think I'll probably have to come back to you on exactly what we do with per toll notice.
I think that'd be really useful, because I think when we spoke last time, I had dragged up, I'd done a, a, you know, as you know, you can think up a taxi plate and and pop it in and have a look at how much the um the fine, or sorry, the unpaid tolls and admin fee would be. Um, so if I was somebody, I'm just looking at that again, there's someone there who's got um a toll amount of about two thousand dollars, um, but they've got ten thousand dollars in admin fees. If you gave them the, you know, the one dollar ten per admin fee, they'd still owe, no, sorry, yes, per admin fee toll, they'd sorry, admin, start again, toll notice, so the admin fee, they'd go down to, say, one thousand one hundred, so, you know, maybe half of um of what their toll amount would be in order to clear that debt. But if you're still insisting that they pay, you know, the entire amount, the ten thousand dollars in admin fee, that's a huge burden on those people. So it seems that that doesn't really reflect the cost of your operations, does it? So is it, I understand that, you know, maybe for Transport for New South Wales, they're having trouble amalgamating uh the the actual physical notices they send out. But from your perspective, amalgamating the fee and discounting it to be just one fee um would seem to be within your power, wouldn't it?
Yeah, we we do take great care and we do put a lot of investment and a lot of effort into make sure that the customer experience is as seamless. And Andrew shared earlier that every customer is a a has an individual circumstance. And so where customers do need our um our assistance through hardship and through difficult situations, we have put a lot of effort in and continue to do so because COVID has created some additional challenges.
These are not necessarily financial hardship positions. This is just somebody has two thousand dollars worth of um tolls due, they have a ten thousand dollar admin fee. Do you, as a matter of course, keep charging them the ten thousand, even though they've decided, they've agreed to pay and that you're going to get your tolls back?
I I think we work through that on a case by case basis, um, along the same principles that I outlined earlier.
But it would be, wouldn't it, Mr Head, within your power to decide that the actual cost of entering into that arrangement and setting up a toll account for that person is a a lot less than the amount of admin fees that you've charged?
Yeah, and I think we we do have flexibility in how we work through some of these um with our customers. But as Andrew said, every customer and every situation is different. I think the the number of customers that find their way all the way through a legal proceeding is extremely small. As Andrew said, in fact, none over the last two years. Um, and so we pride ourselves in making sure that we are proactive in getting in touch with the customer, helping them through and anticipating what what support would give them.
But still, it's it's ten thousand dollars that that taxi driver could have spent on clothes and and school books and instead is having to pay to cover the apparent cost of collecting that amount when you've just told me that it's really just a phone call and putting them onto, you know, getting them an account. Um.
Oh, no, no, that that's probably a little bit simplistic. There are a number of processes that often take place, trying to find out who the person is, what the circumstances are. It may be multiple phone calls. It could rely on technology systems that are in Transport for New South Wales that we need to ask them to access. So there's.
Yeah, but you do that for for one of, like, for one unpaid toll, the same as you would for a hundred unpaid tolls. There's no additional incremental amount incurred, is there, in terms of your costs?
It depends on the timing. Um, so the the example that you cite, we may have contacted that person on the second time that it happened, then the third and then the fourth, and it's accumulated, every circumstance is different. And these are hypotheticals that we're discussing.
Okay.
But the point is, the point that we want to get across is, we do have processes, we do enable our people to have those conversations on an individual basis. We are not completely rigid to the to the processes and the fees. We we try and reach a sensible outcome for the customer. And on the very rare occasion that that can't happen, you can see the numbers in our response to the question on notice about how many go through to the to the final stage.
Could you please provide me on notice, um, as of today, uh, or wha- whatever, you know, whenever you're um you're answering the question uh on notice, but as of that date, um, how much you have currently um outstanding in terms of unpaid tolls that are subject to notices? Um, and how much of that is unpaid tolls and how much of it is admin fee?
We'll take that on notice and come back, Chair.
Thank you, that'd be really useful. And I think from the um committee's perspective, it seems like we have two different um sort of parts of the puzzle uh here with the the bit that Transport for New South Wales does in collecting these unpaid tolls and the bit that the toll operator does. And we're trying to just get to that so that we can make our recommendations accordingly. Um, thank you. I will just double check that none of the other committee members have a question before we wind up for the day. No one is jumping up and down excitedly. Okay, thank you. I think that is all for today. Thank you um again for coming uh a second time. We really do appreciate it, it's very useful. Um, to the extent that questions were taken on notice, there were a few. The committee staff will be in touch with you in those twenty one days to respond. So thank you very much, uh, and that concludes our hearing for today.